Good evening and welcome to the April 25, 2016 work session of the Mayor and Council. Tonight we have one large agenda item which is the budget, but before we get to it, I wanted to give the floor to our colleague Henry Marafa to make a statement.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick statement. I'm going back in the hospital tomorrow to get some more chemo so I could get my transplant, but the biggest problem is the medications I've been taking have affected my ears, so I cannot hear anybody tonight even though I'm wearing hearing aids. So I just said I will just stay and say hello, but I want to make a statement. Tony and Stephanie both have been doing this since 1995, this budget, and the staff and then talking to everybody in the audience has done a superb job. I mean, we haven't made a dozen corrections over the years that were significant, that were just, you know, mind-boggling, we caught little things here and there. The staff does a great job, you all do a great job, and I mean, back when I first started, we did it line item by line item. The only thing I wanted to do was on page 92, I'm going to change the $80 to $85, but that was (laugh). But I really want to thank everybody for doing a really, really professional job. We are second to none when it comes to budgets, and everybody in this room needs to be thanked for that. And since I can't hear what you're all going to say, I'm going to depart and say goodbye, and I'll be back home on Saturday night or Sunday morning, and hopefully then ready for whatever Phase Two is. So again, thank you everybody for your support. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Henry.
Thanks, Henry.
(applause)
Okay, Tony.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Henry. Thank you, Mayor. I would normally, I will start with thanking the dozens of staff that make up the majority of the audience here tonight, and the council, and of course, members of the public that helped us craft the draft budget. There are dozens more that are not here tonight that work for the city. It is just a draft. Nothing is set in stone. You guys, our job is to craft a proposed budget and hand it over to you guys, and you guys approve what you want to approve and then hand it back. So there will be several changes between the draft that was published and the one that's presented for adoption. We'll have several changes just tonight. We do have a lot of ground cover. We have tomorrow night set aside if we need it as an extra day, but if we keep things moving, according to staff calculations, we could probably get through this tonight if you're so inclined. Every year we do change the process just a little bit, and FY17 is no exception, but we're pretty sure that everyone will be able to follow along easily. There's already been a few changes to the draft. A couple of examples would be, we were happy to get, I believe, a $10,000 grant for our financial wellness activities. That's not currently a revenue of the draft because it came in too late, but it will be when you see it in the adopted program. We've also made some decisions really recently about where some employees will report, but there's no bottom-line impact on the budget from those changes, and you'll get details in that from some department heads. Order proceedings, as Judge just said, we'll hear from the public first, then we'll move to a new item which will be how we're handling replacement funds in FY17, and Stephanie Walker will be handling that. Those changes are being made in the interest of both accuracy and transparency. Then we'll have the individual budget presentations. Each department has a standardized introduction, activity number, page number, percent up and down, as we usually do. Then after department budgets are done, Dennis Enslinger will come up and handle the capital improvements plan, hitting mostly the highlights. Many of the accounts have very small issues, but some have highlights that we want to focus on, and then the stormwater CIP. So unless there's any questions about process, we're ready to go to the public.
Great. So this is the time that Mayor and Council would love to hear from anybody in the public who'd like to speak on the budget this evening. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Please, come on up. We ask that you state your name and keep your remarks to no more than three minutes, and anything that goes beyond three minutes or anything you'd like to submit in writing, you're welcome to. Please.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Linda Madden, and I am the Director of Development and Outreach at Mobile Medical Care. First of all, thank you for your longstanding commitment to Gaithersburg's most disadvantaged residents in this wonderfully diverse community. For over 45 years, Mobile Med's mission has been to improve the health of low-income people who face the greatest barriers to care access. Tonight, I'm standing here asking you to support our proposal to combine and strengthen the Gaithersburg Healthcare Network under the city's FY17 RFP number 2016-018, Health and Mental Health Services. Mobile Med is a lead agency of the network. We have very, very strong partners, including Holy Cross Health Center, Mercy Health Clinic, Gaithersburg Help, Episcopal Church of the Ascension, Korean Community Service Center, and Aspire Counseling. The network delivers high-quality, comprehensive, culturally competent primary care to low-income, uninsured, and underinsured residents of the city of Gaithersburg. The network coordinates outreach, essential wraparound services such as medication assistance to some of the neediest city residents. Primary care, which includes integrated behavioral healthcare, can have a tremendous positive impact on the quality of life and is also highly cost-effective. Timely care and regular screenings can reduce not only expensive treatments later, but also help prevent emergency room visits. At our network's quarterly meetings, we brainstorm about common issues, we raise awareness of what new programs or services each of us is offering, and we also promote cross-referrals. Collaboration among the group is very robust. Every organization within the network helps individuals navigate the network and get the services that they need. All of the organizations in the network have not only successfully provided services to the city of Gaithersburg residents, but the network as a whole has consistently succeeded and exceeded its goals for the number of individuals served. Finally, I'd just like to add that we have a very good working relationship with community services staff, all of whom are responsive, helpful, and extremely professional. We are very grateful for the city's past support, and we look forward to continuing to work together to address the health needs of the city of Gaithersburg's most neediest residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers this evening? Not seeing any? Okay, Tony.
Okay, I hand it over to talk about the replacement funds.
Okay.
Thank you. One of the things you'll likely notice in this year's budget is that almost all the departments have a significant change note related to accounts called furniture and equipment replacement, or vehicle and equipment replacement. And rather than have each department repeat the reasons for that, we're just going to cover that right at the beginning. In the past, these replacement accounts were shown in each activity, and they really represent funding that's being set aside for future asset replacements, so as things wear out, that we have the funding available to replace them. In order to show both the funding set aside and the amounts that we're going to be spending on purchases, so both the amounts coming in and the amounts going out on purchases, we needed more than just the expenditure accounts. And so what we did is we set up a new fund so that we can show both the ins and the outs. So the expenditure accounts will now be shown as zero within each activity, and that replacement, or excuse me, that will be replaced with a transfer to the asset replacement fund. So the bottom line of that impact on the general fund is zero, but it's really just moving from within each department to a transfer, which is in the 1911 non-departmental budget, and that can be found on page 124. If you were to look at that page, you would see that that transfer was approximately 1.3 million this year. Within the budget document then, we've added a section called the Asset Replacement Fund, and that can be found beginning on page 447 of the budget document. It's about four pages long. The first page is really just a narrative summary that talks a little bit about the fund, the types of things that go in it, what is being funded by it. The second page then shows a financial summary, and it starts with the amounts that are already on hand for asset replacement, which is just over 10.6 million. Then the FY17 budget provides an additional 1.3 million of funding to be set aside, and then expenditures are predicted to be approximately 2.0 million for this next year. The detail then for those purchases can be found on page 449 and 450. So that's really the new piece that we haven't seen in the past, is that list of budgeted expenditures. Then at the end of FY17, the asset replacement fund is projected to have 9.9 million in available funding for future asset replacements. And it may sound like a very high amount, but that funding is being set aside for assets with a total cost of 19.7 million. So that means that they're approximately 54% funded, based on where they are in their replacement life. That means you may have some assets that were purchased 10 years ago, 15 years ago, 20 years ago, as well as some assets that were purchased just last year that funding hasn't accumulated for. This is a really good program that allows us to ensure that as our assets need to be replaced, we have the funding available, part of what allows us to remain a doctor's aide. But just to recap, the impact really is on those furniture and equipment replacement accounts. Those are all going to zero, to be replaced with a transfer in the 1911 activity, and then we've added the special asset replacement fund. So, and as a result of that change, most departments have this significant change note. I'm happy to answer any questions you have either on the fund or the presentation of the comment.
No, thank you, Stephanie. That frankly, I think it makes a lot of sense, and it is probably easier for the public to digest in this way all in one place, rather than having to go throughout all, each department to find these asset replacement funds.
So what assets does this include? Is this, I mean, it seems like a lot of money for furniture, is it, you mean repairing roads and things too, or is it just assets within office buildings?
All assets and equipment over approximately $5,000. So this includes things like the vehicles for police cars, all of the public works, large equipment that's found within their yard, all of the winter lights, any of those large displays there. I believe that includes some systems, so rather than some individual assets, maybe under 5,000, but things like our computers, citywide, you don't replace them really one at a time, you replace them in big chunks, and so there's categories of assets like servers, computers, printers, and that sort of thing.
About repairs to City Hall, anything like that included?
It does not include buildings. Those things are included within the CIP.
Okay.
Lots of trucks, it seems like.
What's that?
Lots of trucks.
Right.
Trucks, cars.
Any other questions? All right, next.
Okay, then we'll start with the departments then. We'll start with CMO, or City Manager's Office. Are you going to come down or stay up, or stay up there? So I need to come up as well. So first are the three divisions that make up the City Manager's Office, which is CMO, Legal Services, and Economic Development. Overall, the City Manager's Office budget is down by 3.43%. The first activity is Mayor and City Council, and that's found on page 57. The Mayor and City Council activity is 1101, and it is up by, I believe, 0.4%, so good for you. There were no significant changes within the budget, and I would ask for any questions.
Great. Go right ahead. Next is Legal Services.
I'll be doing the next two activities. The first is 1111, Legal Services, which is on page 60. This increased by 1.27%, and there are two significant changes. The first is for $5,125, and this is out of the IT services, and this is to account for two new software systems, the first being the JustFolio Public Information Tracking System, that I think we talked about last week, and the second is for a system called DocuSign, which will assist in the procurement process for electronic signature documents. The second change is to Legal, which is our outside counsel fund. It is being decreased from $35,000 to $25,000, and that's in order to have it to be more closely reflective of historical use. So questions on that account, activity?
Go right ahead.
Okay. The next one is 1122, which is registration elections. It starts on page 63. This one has significantly decreased by 97.81%, and that reflects the fact that we will not have a election in 2017.
A cost-cutting move, clearly.
Yep, absolutely. Trust me, it'll be up next year.
We won't have it in the fiscal year.
In the fiscal year, yes.
Yeah.
Because we will have an election in '17.
Correct, but not in FY17.
As my calendar tells me.
Yes, but not FY17.
Questions? Go right ahead.
The next activity is 1131, and that's City Manager's Office, which is strictly administrative division, which includes intergovernment relations. That budget is up by 0.16%, and again, there are no significant changes in that account.
Okay.
And next is mine, Economic Development. The budget begins on page 70. It's activity number 1133, down 5.5% for FY17 for now. The sole significant change in 1133 fell within 54800, the Economic Development Activities or Simply Toolbox Program. A decrease by 27,000 for FY17 from 129,000 to 102,000 was proposed, as the program was initially thought to be adequately funded for the new fiscal year. Current balance in the program is about $160,000. However, with several new projects and applications for funding in the pipeline, the Toolbox Fund is anticipated to dip below $50,000 by next month. Additionally, recent modifications to the Toolbox Program, such as the expansion to $4 a square foot for certain qualified properties, as well as signage landscaping facade improvements in Old Town, are likely going to expand the scale and scope of applications over the next year. So rather than reducing the Toolbox allocation to 102,000, staff is proposing to add 100,000 to the Toolbox, with 100,000 less going into what we call the Sunny Day Fund or Opportunities Fund. We have had fewer requests for funding through the Sunny Day Program over the past year, but the Toolbox Program is as popular and successful as it's been. To meet present and anticipated future demand, we propose a significant change to keep the Toolbox Program sufficiently funded.
So just to be clear, this is not an increase in the amount of expenditures, it's really just moving the funds from one place to another.
Correct.
And where does the Sunny Day Fund remind us show up in the budget?
That's in Finance and Administration, it's called non-departmental.
Okay.
It currently has $100,000 funded, proposed for FY17, and we propose to move that $100,000 into 1133. Sunny Day Fund still has 1.8, almost $2 million in its escrow right now.
Which rolls forward from previous years that isn't used.
Right.
Okay.
Any questions?
Go right ahead.
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
That's it.
Okay, well done.
So then we would ask Human Resources, who's next?
Did you get all you wanted? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. The Human Resources budget information starts on page 75. It is activity area 1135, and it decreased 3.08% for FY2017, and there are two significant changes. The first significant change is in Information Technology Services, object code 531000, which decreased $25,345, and this is primarily due to IT staff renegotiating our contract with ADP, the city's human resources information services provider, which resulted in a significant savings. Additionally, the city has stepped up its efforts to archive inactive employees in the HR information system, which also reduced overall costs in this area. I do want to note, though, that some of the savings realized as a result of this contract renegotiation are offset by proposed funding to support new hire integration between our automated hiring and onboarding software and ADP. The other significant changes in wellness programs, object code 534500, which increased $8,680. This is in part due to the need to replace one of the city's Automatic External Defibrillator, or the AEDs, and a majority of the AED batteries and pads for the 14 AEDs located at various city facilities. Additionally, this program area is increasing as a result of the Wellness Committee's efforts to expand the city's wellness programs, which will include Wellness Day signage and marketing, as well as increased wellness initiatives such as Wellness Wednesdays and Wellness on the weekends. Increases in this program area also include additional costs related to an increase in the number of city staff eligible to be covered by the Employee Assistance Program. Additionally, while not included as a significant change, it's important to note that as part of last year's budget, the city entered into a contract with Montgomery College to provide training and development programs specifically geared toward developing skill sets of supervisors and emerging supervisors, and this will continue to be a priority in FY2017. This training series has been structured with the city's mission, vision, and guiding principles in mind. It is our goal to continue to develop and implement an effective training series with a key focus on enhanced leadership, supervisory, coaching, and customer service skills. This training will support our employees in meeting the objectives of the city's long-range strategic plan. That's all I have.
Thanks, Kim. Great job on that ADP contract.
Yeah, well, that's IT.
Well done.
Congratulations on a department like this coming in actually significantly less than previous year's budget. It is, it's quite an accomplishment.
Yeah, I think investment in our staff and in their professional development actually saves us money in the long run, so this is a wise thing to do.
The training has been well-received by employees.
For those who couldn't hear, Kim, she said the training's been well-received by employees, and I couldn't agree more with my ear. It's definitely a worthwhile investment. Go ahead.
The actual expenses for healthcare are found in a different.
Right.
And they did go up, so we'll be discussing that, too.
So Tony, are we marketing tuition reimbursement, because that seems to be underutilized per budget?
We've had a number of discussions with the senior leadership team about the need to, A, accurately budget for who's actually going to take classes, but also to encourage more people to take classes.
Welcome, Britta.
Welcome, Britta.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Department of Community and Public Relations is comprised of four divisions: Public Information, Cable Television, Community Services, and Homeless Assistance. There are staff here from those divisions, should you have specific questions that I can't enter. Overall, the Department of Community and Public Relations has a flat budget. It's down actually 0.4%. Public Information, which is Activity 1212, starts on page 88. Throughout the PIO and Cable TV budget, you're going to see shifts in funding allocations and increases in IT services and software maintenance. As you may or may not know, Adobe has moved its suite of graphic design and editing products to the cloud, and that's resulted in a net increase in expense and a change in some of the line items for those technical expenses. The miscellaneous professional services line item decreased by $18,500. There will be no biennial citizen survey this year, but we did increase the allocation in this line item a little bit for freelance photography, as we're making a concerted effort to try to maintain a very updated catalog of imagery for our photo-heavy social media platforms. Advertising in PIO decreased by $5,000 because we will not have election-related expenses in this fiscal year. Again, we have increased allocations in this line item a little bit for brand advertising, and we've also budgeted for some boosted posts and other digital advertising to increase social media engagement and get those newsletter subscriptions up. While the individual line items don't meet the threshold of significant change, I did want to note that there are funds in this budget to reflect our growing involvement with social media, so there are allocations in the Professional Dues category, resource materials, and conferences and travel for our communication specialists and digital media specialists. You'll also note an increase of $7,500 in the printing line item. When the Gazette ceased operations last year, in the spring of 2015, we had to begin paying to print our twice-yearly In Gaithersburg magazine. To cover those expenses in this current fiscal year, we actually diverted print advertising funds that were in arts and events over at Rick to pay for the printing of the magazine. The Gazette sold outside advertising in that magazine. We are now using all the ad space exclusively for our own events, but in fiscal year 17, we're going to put all the printing costs back in the PIO budget for that. And then postage decreased by 7,000 because we're not going to be mailing a voter guide in FY17. Are there any questions on the PIO budget?
Question, but it might just, it's a more general question, because I've noticed that each of the successive departments so far, it seems year over year, there's flat salary growth. Is that reflective of compensation not going up, or personnel issues, or cost of living?
That's a good point. Actually, it was in my notes from the intro, but I glossed, passed over it. Actually, it's, there is an increase both in the cost of living and merit for all employees, but it's countered by the new vacancy allowance that we're using to better, more accurately project our actual expenses in personnel. We added nine proposed new positions, so clearly expenses are up, but when we took four, 6% as a vacancy allowance, 4% as a vacancy allowance, that reduced the budget by quite a bit. And of course, there's a lot of growth in non-departmental and the CIP, but there's definitely an increase programmed in this for employees.
Can you explain the vacancy allowance for people who might be listening out there to how that works?
We program every position.
Since we're adding people all the time, so yeah.
We, well, we add authorized people every year. We program 100% of every salary in every budget, and one of the reasons why there's been such a wide gap is because it takes time to hire people. Sometimes we have to go out for two rounds of interviews if we don't find the right candidate, and we just, we did an analysis, and it said, you know, you're really only spending about 90, 92% each year, and this goes back for years. So to be conservative, we put it at 96%, but a 4% decrease is over $1 million. So we felt safe in using the vacancy allowance. A lot of other municipalities do the same thing, and businesses.
Yeah, makes a lot of sense. So in other words, I think we had this discussion earlier in the year, in past years, we were budgeting as if we were filling all the vacant positions for the entire year, which caused us to overestimate expenses pretty consistently, and now you're trying to get closer.
Yes, we're doing the same thing with healthcare. Not only the vacancy allowance in healthcare, but we also assumed that every employee had family coverage, because it was the most conservative way to budget it, but now we're using a multiplier, something that's more likely. We have a long history now with this, and we just want to be more accurate.
All right, I have a quick one for PIO. We've talked a lot over the last year or so about ways to proactively improve communication with the public, with the HOAs, with all the different interest groups within the area. I know you have added a social media person, but it doesn't look on this budget like you have significant plans to grow our communications capabilities. Where are you going with this at this point? What's your intention?
When we hired the digital media specialist back in the fall, it was a part-time position. It's been roughly about six months now, and we're kind of gauging where we are with that and where we want to go with the position. We felt like we needed to test that for a while before we committed to making a full-time position out of it. We also have a feeling that we want to master what we have right now, which is Facebook and Twitter, and be masters of those, and we're not there yet, in our opinion, before we move into some other things. So we're still in an analysis stage, in my opinion, where we've done a lot very quickly, but I don't think we've really analyzed where the next step for that is yet.
All right, just for reference with that, you know, I don't want to upset the apple cart or take too long when we have a lot to go through, but aside from social media, I think there are a lot of ways to communicate, and we've got a bit of a gap because of the loss of local media, so I'd love to see us work harder at figuring out ways to reach out more proactively to all the different groups and really make sure we get the word out on what's going on.
And I think that's in there. I just don't know that there's financial implications for some of that. You know, I think there's ways to do that without spending money to do it, and it's just figuring out what the way, exactly what that is to do.
All right, thanks.
Okay. The next is our cable TV. It's Activity 1213, starts on 92. There's a 1.4% overall decrease in that budget. You will notice slight increase in part-time salaries for this division. We are underbudgeted in this line item for FY16. Last fall, we hired several part-time camera operators who are now assisting us not just with live meeting coverage like we're doing tonight, but with camera and light setups for some of the video spots that we're doing, and we're increasing. And as Stephanie noted earlier, replacement funding is no longer appearing in our operating budgets. In FY17, we have submitted a request to spend $40,000 from the Cable TV Asset Replacement Fund for electronics and Channel One replacements, which support the video feeds and graphics on our cable channel.
A question about, I guess, off-site telecasting. My impression is that's an issue.
We don't have the capability to do that.
Correct. Is that something that we're looking into in the future?
We have not explored that in a serious way, I would say. You know, we've thought about it. It's a significant expense to be able to do that, and we haven't necessarily seen or seen driven the need to do that. But if there's some interest in the council to look at ways to televise from some of our other locations, we'd be happy to explore it.
I mean, I recall that we had looked at that issue a few years ago, because, I mean, it seemed, you know, only natural as we were sort of expanding our communications capabilities and our social media capabilities. It's something that we might want to do as either features or to have live coverage of events as we go around the city. And as I recall from that public conversation, ultimately, we decided, while it would have been a nice thing to have, the cost outweighed the benefit. But, you know, it would be a nice thing to have, and maybe the prices have come down since the last time we had this discussion. since the last time we had this discussion, and maybe it's worth at least exploring.
We're going to experiment with a little bit of some of our outdoor concerts this summer and doing some three-camera work for those concerts. It won't be able to be broadcast live, but we could at least capture it and then hear it later.
Right.
In that format, and we're going to try that to see if there's some market for it.
I know we were thinking, we were setting up to do like a live stream of the state of the city, but the bandwidth at Asbury wasn't sufficient to...
We were trying to do that on Facebook, as a lot of Facebook being, you know.
But maybe in places where the Wi-Fi is stronger.
We'll experiment with a, perhaps a book festival might be coming up that we can try.
Maybe so.
So, yeah, you know, there are social media applications or apps that can livestream video and audio, and I think that that's an opportunity. I think what we need actually is kind of a whole strategic vision on how we might develop our communication capabilities, including television, print, and digital. And figure out which directions, the kind of options that we can consider in going forward that allows us to plan, I think, a little bit strategically, both in terms of staffing but also in terms of investments and what we need to do. The technology's changed so quickly, even for things like streaming video and audio, that it would seem like some of those expenses are going down. Certainly, there's another way to broadcast live TV, which is, you know, we're all familiar with news stations doing that. That's a significant capital investment, I think, to do that. I'm not sure that that's what we need to consider, but I think if we have a kind of overall plan or vision of how to do that, then that's, it would be worthwhile discussing that.
Yeah, I was in on the conversation a few years ago that Ryan was just talking about, but like him, I would like to revisit the issue, see if costs have come down, see if we can expand our ability to reach out to the public. And I can say that, sitting up in my hotel room in Philadelphia while I was on reserve duty, I was quite sad that I couldn't watch Judd speaking at the State of the Union.
We tried.
But yeah, I mean, I think particularly since, as we move into the new building, or if we move into the new building, and we're talking about possibly expanding media presence there, it might be something to look into, expanding our capabilities.
Okay.
All right.
Next activity is 1215, which is Community Services, starts on page 96. You'll see a 1.3% overall increase for that budget. The Program Activities line item shows a decrease of $22,450. In FY 17, a new line item has been created for expenses related to holiday giving, and you will now see that reflected in 568400. This is going to allow us for more transparent accounting of the donations and expenses related to that program. And we also added some additional funding in the Program Activities line item to support the 20th anniversary of character counts in the coming fiscal year. Early in the budgeting process, we were given direction that up to a 3% across-the-board increase in grant funding would be considered. The total contribution line item in Community Services is proposed at just over $1 million. That's an increase of $27,800 or 2.1%. The budget continues the opportunity grants for both nonprofits and schools. We are proposing to put a little bit more of this pot towards the school side of things this year. And our grant funding continues to be focused in service areas that include financial empowerment and vocational services, food and nutrition, health and mental health, housing preservation, and housing stabilization for homeless individuals and families. We're also continuing to provide grants to nonprofits that operate in schools and to schools directly, and the community advisory and educational committee members are hard at work on their RFP and grant reviews. We will be coming before you with a resolution to authorize specific allocations in June. And while it doesn't rise to the level of a significant change, I did want to note that in 1215, there is funding in the budget to allow for a staff person at Community Services to attain housing counseling certification. That's going to allow for additional capacity to help city residents with eviction prevention and other housing crisis issues. Are there any questions on the Community Services budget?
Just a comment. You know, we say every year how impressive our Community Services operation is, and while we're proud that we have a pretty robust budget for the nonprofit grants and for the other financial needs to support our, the folks in our Community Services Division who run these programs and coordinate these programs. I mean, at the end of the day, they do a lot. They leverage this, these resources tremendously, and, you know, just another opportunity to give them a shout out. I know that I've had conversations with the city manager and others over the last couple of years saying, "We're very, very proud of our commitment to supporting social services and safety net services," and I think we will continue to do that. The fact that we've actually increased that budget this year reflects that. But I think as we think strategically down the road, we need to decide, you know, what path we're going to take with respect to the city's commitment to nonprofit services in a way that is financially sustainable. That's not necessarily a conversation for tonight. Maybe it's a conversation for the next one or two strategic planning retreats, as Tony and I have discussed. I have been a strong advocate of increasing funding for nonprofit services and social services, but I understand also the concern that it's not something that can grow indefinitely at huge rates, even though, of course, there are plenty of people out there who need and use our services, and we want to continue to be a leader in this area. I'm very, very proud of what we've done in this area. I think we do more than any other local government of our size in this area, but, you know, but I recognize that it's a challenge to think about where we're going to be with this five, 10, 15, 20 years from now. So I just wanted to raise that point while at the same time reconfirming my commitment to having that robust system of social services and grants.
I concur. I bet we have to figure out how to make it sustainable so that we can continue that effort and our commitment.
Okay, and lastly, we have homeless assistance. That's Activity 1216. It starts on page 102. There's an overall decrease in this budget of 6.2%. Federal, state, and county funding, the Friends of Wells Robertson House annual allocation and service fees paid by those residents who are able to help offset the program's expenses by about 45%. The furniture and fixtures line item decreased by $5,000, a system furniture budgeted in FY 16, obviously, is not a recurring expense. And while not a significant change, we did decrease our Program Activities allocations by about $2,500. The Friends of Wells Robertson House continues its support of the program through an annual allocation, but we are not budgeting the funding we have received from them in the past, about $9,000 for contingency fund for our residents. But we did increase some funding in here for vocational and career counseling for total wellness activities at the house. And then I also wanted to note that operating and staff expenses for DeSalem House are budgeted under 1215. That's Community Services for reasons related to HUD grant accounting, but the day-to-day operations and management are coordinated through the Homeless Assistance Division. And while there aren't any budget implications with it, I wanted to point out that in the current fiscal year, we instituted program changes to allow for greater turnover, thus creating housing alternatives for more graduating Wells residents. And since January of 2015, we have discharged all former residents at DeSalem who had lived there for five years or more, and they've all moved into permanent housing. Any questions?
Sounds good. Thank you, Britta.
Thank you.
Stephanie, you're back.
I'm back. Finance and Administration, as a department, is made up of four different activities and begins on page 106 of the budget. The department as a whole is down about 3% from the FY 16. And the first activity within this department is the Finance Administration, which is 1141. And that can be found on page 112. That activity is, has increased 19% over last year, which is primarily related to personnel changes. The non-personnel-related significant changes include the Information Technology Services, which has decreased by $13,915 related to the ADP contract change that we were able to achieve. And that was offset by an increase in miscellaneous professional services of $15,450, which is related to our investment advisor fees. As you know, we've been implementing that during this fiscal year, and we should be fully deployed with the $75 million actually later this week, so that piece will be completed because the dollar amounts and the advisory services were contracted during this fiscal year. Next year's budget reflects our actual expected cost. And then it also includes budget for safekeeping fees, which is the bank that actually holds the custody of our securities, which is not included in last year's budget. And those costs are offset by budget revenue of about $400,000 from investment income. Happy to answer any questions on that activity.
Any questions? Go right ahead.
Moving into 1142, which is our Housing and Community Development activity. The Activity Analysis page for that is found on 117, on page, excuse me, 117. Overall, that activity had an 11% increase within it, and that's related to our miscellaneous professional services, which has increased by $42,500 for contractual services to assist the city in identifying some options and appropriate projects for Housing Initiatives Fund that will be undertaken in conjunction with our Planning and Code Department and probably some housing studies as well. The third activity within this department is 1149, which is the General Services, and can be found on page 120. The overall activity decreased by 28%, which primarily related to the equipment replacement items. The other significant change relates to office supplies, which has decreased about $6,000, just to reduce the budget to more historical, actual levels that we've been Last but certainly not least, the 1911, which are non-departmental budget. Now, this has a number of significant changes within it. The first is related to our vacation and sick pay, which we have increased by $15,000. That represents a 5% increase over the actual amount that we paid out in the last fiscal year, and that increase increases due to anticipated salary adjustments. Our state unemployment account decreased by $10,396 to reflect fewer expected claims moving forward. Our workers' compensation account decreased by $70,913, and this really is related to some changes that our carrier made last fiscal year, both on how they allocate their costs amongst the participants, as well as a decrease in actual claims that we've been receiving. Our retirement health savings account increased by about $10,000 as more retirees have selected that rather than the city healthcare. The Accounting and Audit Account increased by $18,000. That really is an account more for banking fees, and we've been notified that our primary operating bank has increased all of our transaction fees across the board. So that is something that we will be looking at a solicitation for during this next fiscal year.
Good idea.
Who's our primary operating bank?
Bank of America.
We are with Bank of America. Our miscellaneous professional services increased by $157,800 related to our new contract for photo radar fines. Last year's budget was based on 41% of a budget of revenue of $1,008,000. We're actually experiencing revenue results much higher than that level, and so this year we're actually expected to be approximately, excuse me, in FY 17, we're budgeting $2,090,000 in revenue, so the expenditure increase is really primarily related to that revenue increase as well. The new contract mimics the 41%, but it is a fixed fee contract of $880,000 plus some carryover collections from fines incurred under the old contract, which we've estimated about $26,400. Our professional dues and certification fees increased by approximately $5500 due to increased fees in Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. The miscellaneous account decreased by $146,500 related to the Economic Development Opportunity Fund, which Tom had mentioned earlier. The non-payroll-related insurance has been decreased by $30,000 as the premium for our property liability insurance has been lower than expected due to our past claims history. Our tax abatement account decreased by $150,000 as one of the agreements that we paved in this fiscal year is now completely completed, and so no further funds are needed under that agreement. Last but not least, our transfers to other accounts, our other funds, has decreased by approximately $1.2 million, and that account represents transfers to our Stormwater Fund, our CIP, our other post-employment benefits, and then the Asset Replacement Fund, which has been mentioned. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I guess this is just an opportunity maybe for staff to talk a little bit about the impact of the win case and the comptroller issue, and, you know, I guess that fits with Finance Administration maybe better than anywhere else. There's not necessarily a direct reflection somewhere in this proposed budget to address that, unless I missed it. But my understanding is there wouldn't really be, because it's not really an expenditure so much as it is a reduced future revenue stream, right?
Correct.
But don't we have a payback?
But that's the future revenue stream, right?
The main impact will be in the tax billing, and it doesn't start until 2020. It doesn't start until after the win case is done. I want to say 2020, though 2024 sticks in my mind as well. Doesn't start for a while.
Okay, but then the win case wouldn't really be reflected in our budget either, except in terms of reduced revenue from income tax revenue stream, right?
Correct. It is. And so far, it hasn't been minimal, but we believe that the entire sum total is less than six figures, and it'll be spread over a number of quarters. But all the detection and processing has not been completed yet. So we're hopeful that that's much less than the millions that are involved in the tax billing.
Sure, sure. But, you know, I mean, I guess from a sort of a disclosure and documentation perspective, you're not going to see a line item in this budget that says win case minus $100,000 or anything like that.
No, we're just expected to budget based on what the comptroller says the reductions will be.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Question on the transfers to other funds. You said the number was reduced by 1.2 million. I don't actually see that here. I'm looking at line 58900. It looks like about an $800,000 reduction.
You are correct. I must not have updated my narrative for one of the last minute changes.
All right, you're just making sure we're actually paying attention to the details, right?
You are. Very good catch.
Thanks.
Very good catch.
So which is the right number? Which is the right number?
The number that is included in the, on page 122 is the correct number. My narrative, I apologize, was a little bit dated. We make last minute changes.
Only $400,000.
You know, the Finance Department is the last one to make changes to their stuff. I'm more worried about everybody else's.
Cog's thoughts, right. Any other questions?
What does the Professional Dues and Certification line item include?
Professional...
In any particular account or in this account?
In this account. This seems to be the non-departmental.
That includes the Maryland Municipal League, costs about $35,000, the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments at $57,300, and the National League of Cities.
Okay, so citywide memberships. Do we pay for certifications and professional memberships for individual employees who need to maintain them for their own?
We do.
We do. Within each individual activity, it would be reflected there.
So our membership with the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments comes with some benefits as well. I mean, my understanding is that most municipalities and most organizations probably save more than we pay in dues due to joint buying programs and things like that. Is that your understanding as well?
I defer that margin to the city manager response.
That is COG's longstanding hope. We find that our procurement process generally has been very competitive with the prices that COG can get us, but it is very convenient to use what's known as the COG writer, which means contracts are automatically available. But they're pushing to kind of, to recurring expenses, gas, electricity, and things like that have not really, we use the counties for electricity, I believe, other people for gas. So from time to time, I would not be surprised if over time we saved close to $50,000 from our COG memberships. Obviously, there's other benefits as well.
Yeah, sure. I mean, there's all the intangible, direct benefits, you know, that you can't really quantify from advocacy on behalf of all their members and all of that, so.
No, I'm not arguing with the benefits. I mean, given, otherwise, I wouldn't be showing up at all their meetings the way I do, but I just like to understand that there's a, you know, if the level of offsetting savings is what they've been advertising.
Yeah, I believe that the director likes to say that they want to save us twice our dues. That has not occurred historically, but even, you know, a substantial percentage of a year's dues is a great benefit. Okay, thanks.
All right. Next, we have IT, right? Welcome, Pete.
Good evening. The Information Technology Budget starts on page one twenty-six. The IT Department consists of two activities. Eleven forty-five, whose budget is down by four point eight percent for FY seventeen. And eleven forty-six, which is Geographic Information Systems, which is down zero point nine eight percent for FY seventeen. Collectively, the IT budget is down by four point two four percent for FY seventeen. The proposed FY seventeen budget for Information Technology reflects an expanding and increasingly technical infrastructure with incremental changes, increases for software maintenance and machinery and equipment. One set of changes which is reflected in this year's proposed budgets for IT and other departments is that we moved costs for cloud-based services, software services, from Object Code five three one six hundred, which is software maintenance agreements, to five three one thousand, which is IT services. This has introduced offsetting significant changes in some activities, but we believe it is a more accurate characterization of our expenses. There are four significant changes for eleven forty-five in the proposed budget. Five three one five hundred software licenses decreased by five thousand dollars due to lower anticipated needs for additional software licenses. Five three one six hundred software maintenance agreements increased twenty-one thousand nine, eight hundred ninety dollars due to the anticipated renewal of multiple multi-year support agreements that are due to expire in FY sixteen or FY seventeen. Five five one thousand landline telephone increased by twenty-nine thousand two hundred due to the pending acquisition of four PRI circuits to provide telecom services for the new phone system. Associated with this is decreased spending for traditional phone lines, which should be reflected in the budgets of other activities. Five seven three thousand repair and maintenance for machinery and equipment decreased by thirteen thousand five hundred due to dropping maintenance for the city's legacy phone systems. Any questions on eleven forty-five?
Yeah, I do. If the city were to be thinking about making significant investments in our forward-facing, our public-facing IT resources, is that something that would show up here, or is that something that would be more like a capital budget thing?
It would be a capital budget.
Okay.
The operating was really for ongoing recurring expenses, mostly.
I mean, the reason I ask is because, I mean, I think it's impressive that you're reflecting almost five percent reduction, which probably has a lot to do with matching up expenses better to to the budget as opposed to what we've been doing in the past in all our departments. So, you know, a closer budgeting number. But there's also been a bit of policy discussion over the last several months about, you know, wanting to invest in our city's IT. And, you know, I don't want staff to miss an opportunity to ask us for the resources they need to get there. So if this is not the right place in the budget, that's fine. We could talk about it when we get to the right place in the budget. But, you know, I don't want to speak for others, but ask us what you, you know, for what you need in order to address some of the questions, issues that have come up in the last several months about, you know, the city's website or other services that we have, you know, our video, online video, any of that. Because we want to be able to provide the support that staff needs to get these things tweaked in the way that we've talked about. So I'll just offer that.
I appreciate that.
Any other questions, comments? All right, go ahead, Pete.
All right. Eleven forty-six, as I mentioned, is Geographic Information Systems. That starts on page one thirty-three, and as I mentioned, that was down zero point nine eight percent. The primary focus of the GIS Division continues to be the support and data development for the Water Quality Production Program, including ongoing improvements to the parcel boundary and impervious cover data sets. At the same time, GIS Division personnel are increasingly working with city staff as other departments discover how GIS information can enhance their own programs. There are two significant changes listed for eleven forty-six. Five three one thousand Information Technology Services increased eight thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars, largely due to the relocation of cloud-based software subscription services from five three one six hundred software maintenance agreements. Conversely, five three one six hundred software maintenance agreements decreased five thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars due to the relocation of cloud-based software services to five three one thousand Information Technology Services. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
So are you finding the trend for buying software as a service and software in the cloud, things like that, is saving us money in the long run? Or is it, is there any, also, is there any concern over using cloud-based services where if a company goes out of business, suddenly all your data or all your processes are out there in limbo? Are there any issues like that that we're looking at?
Answering those in order, I think moving to cloud-based services will increase our costs. That's why the companies are moving towards that model. It's a better, ongoing revenue stream currently. We will make an investment to purchase a license for, or an application, and then pay, you know, some maintenance fees, ongoing maintenance fees that are a small portion of what the initial cost was. Now, with the recurring subscription model, the income is enhanced for the vendor. So I think our costs are going to increase. Regarding cloud-based services, you touched on certainly one concern. One is companies going out of business or, you know, God forbid, having a disagreement and holding your data or services hostage. There's technological concerns. If you're going off-site, then you're all, you're really dependent on your internet connection. So increased bandwidth for offline, off-campus services. And then if your connections go down, then you're potentially dead in the water unless you have backup circuits or backup internal services. So there's a number of concerns, certainly with the cloud-based subscription model.
But hopefully, you're addressing those in terms of operational capabilities. And also, is there some savings in terms of not having to maintain the servers that all this data ends up living on? And other, you know, personnel services that have to provide support directly as opposed to letting someone else do it, and hopefully where they might have more scale?
There could be. We haven't looked at those directly. One thing that's largely driving us towards the cloud-based services is that's where the vendors are steering us. You know, Adobe, as Phil had mentioned, is going to that cloud-based model. One of the projects in the coming year is replacement of the class system that Parks and Rec uses for their class registrations and scheduling. The likely, or a successor product from the company that we have class from is cloud-based only. Not saying that's definitely where we're going. We're going to do an RFP, so we'll see how that pans out. But a lot of the vendors are steering us in that direction.
Sorry, didn't mean to sidetrack the discussion.
Not at all.
Okay.
The field seems filled with a number of vendors, big names and small names alike. I mean, IBM, Amazon, you know, Apple, all have cloud services. And some of them have services designed specifically for government. So it would seem that there's competition out there in the field as well for our dollars, so.
There is.
So we should be able to benefit from some of that.
All right.
All right.
Go ahead.
One other question, and I don't know if this is more for Planning and Code or for IT, but where do we stand on the rollout of other, again, kind of user interface applications for EnterGov? I know we, you know, just in recent months, as the weather's gotten better, I've had a few constituents call me up and go, why can't I renew my dog license online yet, things like that? Just wondering where those things stand. I know we have been in the process of rolling those things out, sort of in phases.
That is a very timely question, and that is something that John and I have worked together on. If I may speak for John right now. We've looked at what EnterGov has to offer. The current product is something called CAP, which is Citizen Access Portal. And EnterGov has developed a successor product to that called CSS, which is Citizens Self-Service. And looking at those two products back side by side, CSS is significantly a better product than CAP. CAP is really getting no more development and enhancement. So based on what we saw in some demos a couple of months ago, Planning Code made the decision to go ahead with CSS in favor of CAP. As a matter of fact, today, early at five PM, we upgraded EnterGov's system to the latest release. And that is the platform that we need to support the CSS platform. So in the coming weeks, we'll be working on getting that installed and migrating from CAP over to CSS product. And then we should see enhanced services as they are released by EnterGov.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
Thank you.
Next, we have Parks, Rec, and Culture. Michelle has brought the big book, look at that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I also want to recognize that the four Division Chiefs are in the audience as well, and they can answer any specific questions regarding their program areas. So the department is comprised of twenty accounts. The first is fourteen eleven Administration, located on page one forty-nine, which is down six point four percent for FY seventeen. Accounting and Audit increased by thirteen thousand dollars to reflect higher anticipated credit card processing fees. This is indicative of an increase in revenue and a continued rise in online transactions. Vehicles and Equipment increased by forty thousand dollars to reflect the purchase of a new electric or a hybrid SUV for the department. Any questions?
Nope, go right ahead.
Okay. Fourteen fifteen, Recreation Programs and Sports begins on page one fifty-three and is down three point one six percent for FY seventeen. General Operating Supplies decreased eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars due to the elimination of two programs, the Men's Softball Program and Cricket, and totaling three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and the recoding of items to awards and presentations in the amount of five thousand dollars. Therefore, Awards and Presentations increased by nine thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars to reflect increased costs of youth and adult sports awards in the amount of four thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and the reallocation of the five thousand dollars from General Operating. Electric decreased by seven thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars to reflect reduced winter use at the Synthetic Turf Field at Lakeland's Park. Rental of Facilities decreased by eight thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars to reflect the average actual use over a three-year period.
Any questions? Go right ahead.
Okay. Fourteen sixteen, Recreation Classes, starting on page one fifty-seven, is down five point one five percent for FY seventeen. Instructor Services decreased by fifty thousand dollars to reflect the inability to hire self-insured class instructors. We try to hire contract instructors but have a lot of difficulty. Thus, part-time wages have been increased to accommodate this service need. Fourteen seventeen, Youth Services, located on page one sixty, is up one point three eight percent for FY seventeen. This division is celebrating twenty-five years of service to our youth, and there are no significant changes.
Great.
Fourteen eighteen, Summer Camps begins on page one sixty-three and is up point nine one percent for FY seventeen. We provide a fun and engaging summer for over a thousand youth annually through eleven camps at eight sites. There are no significant changes. Fourteen nineteen, the Youth Center at Robertson Park begins on page one sixty-six and is down point zero one percent for FY seventeen. The members of the center devoted over thirty-five hundred hours of service to their community. There's no significant changes. Fourteen twenty, the Skate Park, on page one sixty-eight, is up eight point four percent for FY seventeen as the operating season is extended into the late fall. This is a facility that staff has been grappling with. Due to a decrease in interest over the years, staff will be evaluating this site this year with recommendations forthcoming. And there are no significant changes.
Interesting, because I see at the skate spots, at least the one that's near where Mike and I live, it's used all the time. I mean, it's really heavily used.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I was going to ask if the county has experienced a similar decline in use at their skate parks.
Actually, Smitty attended a session, educational session, at the MRPA Conference two weeks ago. And skating is down nationally thirty percent. So it is on the decline nationally, but we can go ahead and check with the area jurisdictions.
Yeah, so are we opening a hoverboard park now?
Will come with recommendations.
We have had a number of discussions about the prime real estate occupied by the skate park at Borah Park, and that whether there's something that is, because the skate spots do seem to be pretty busy. And that if that's the model that people want to use, then that's what we should be looking at.
Right.
Well, and, you know, the county's invested quite a bit at all of the major rec centers to build these skate parks. Some of them are, you know, quite large, much larger than ours, so.
Right, and we have that, the ability, since ours isn't concrete, where we can go ahead and take the individual elements out to various parks and have the ability for residents within certain neighborhoods to be able to utilize it, so.
Any other questions, comments? Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay. Fourteen twenty-one, Casey Community Center, appearing on page one seventy, is down four point four six percent for FY seventeen. Renovations to the facility will be complete mid-May. Staff has been planning a ribbon-cutting ceremony in the upcoming months, highlighting the transformations and the center's fortieth anniversary. General Operating increased by eight thousand six hundred and eighty dollars to reflect the addition of new program initiatives associated with the renovation project. And Furniture and Fixtures decreased by five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars to reflect the completion of replacing public use tables and chairs.
Go right ahead.
Fourteen twenty-two is the Water Park. It's located on page one seventy-five and is down thirteen point two five percent for FY seventeen. The Mayor and Council supported new policies and procedures for this upcoming season. Staff is focusing energy on a series of events centered on resident use and retention. Furniture and Equipment decreased by six thousand dollars due to a one-time purchase in FY sixteen. Fourteen twenty-three, the Arts Barn begins on page one eighty and is down five point four one percent for FY seventeen. Under the Arts on the Green Initiative, this facility and the mansion continue to develop new and trending programs. Part-time staff increased by thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars to reflect three-year trends in actual expenditures and support of these programs and rentals. Fourteen twenty-four, the Old Town Youth Center, starting on page one eighty-four, is down four point three five percent for FY seventeen. The studio continues to experience strong daily attendance and several successful programs. Part-time salaries increased by six thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars due to minimum wage impact and the increased staffing for summer camp programs. Fourteen twenty-five is the Benjamin Gaither Center, on page one eighty-eight, and is up point two five percent for FY seventeen. Since the renovation last June, membership, daily attendance, and participation in programs has increased. Part-time salaries, like Recreation Classes, this line item increased by five thousand ninety-eight dollars due to monies transferred from Instructor Services. Staff struggles to obtain contract instructors worth their own insurance requirements. Miscellaneous Professional Services increased by twelve thousand six hundred dollars due to additional lunches required for the nutrition program. To date, we have served twenty-six percent more than the same time last year and are anticipating approximately eight thousand lunches for the year. And Instructor Services decreased by six thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars due to part-time staff teaching the various classes.
So the issue with difficulty finding self-insured instructors, how is that impacting what we can offer to our seniors? what we can offer to our seniors?
What we're doing is, we're trying to hire contract instructors, so part-time staff monies and all the salary benefits and all of that would be reduced. And since we're not able to do that, we are hiring part-time instructors, and a lot of our staff are getting certified in fitness to go ahead and teach classes themselves. So every full-time employee at the senior center teaches classes.
Okay, good.
Go ahead.
So let me, well, let me ask about the meals issue, because that seems like a significant increase that, you know, I mean, in the out-years, if it continues to grow that way, it's going to be an issue for us to address. So do we have a sense as to why that growth is happening?
Well, we're, we have an increase in members.
Right.
And the membership is utilizing the center, so they're joining and they are coming. So it is a federal, a federal grant through, that's passed down through the county.
Okay, so does the grant grow as the
Yes, staff
membership in the program grows?
Yes, staff is working with Montgomery County.
Okay, so does that mean that even if the program continues to grow and more people are signing up to do the program and get the meals, that we're going to keep, at least theoretically, keep getting the money through the federal and county?
We hope so. And we visit this issue throughout the year, touching base with Montgomery County and trying to even have Montgomery County try to help offset the cost of this program if the federal dollars aren't there. And we've been able to go ahead and continue to offer the program.
Okay.
It's a fair point, but it's about 30 lunches a day. And we do get some support. And anecdotal feedback is that this is often, you know, the best meal that these are getting, so we're really, really reluctant to move away from it too quickly.
Right.
So we're, we're budgeting for some growth, but we're going to keep it reasonable at the same time.
We'll keep an eye on it.
Well, you know, these, the fact that these are federally funded tells us how the reach of those programs from the federal government comes down to the municipal level. So it's really important that that's conveyed, but, you know.
Well, I think it goes back to what I said earlier, when we were talking about community services, because this is, you know, it's in a different department, but it's a community service as well. And, you know, the idea that we have really been a leader in providing these services, and we should be proud of that, and we should continue to do this, but we also need to, at the same time, think about sustainability over the long haul in being able to provide services in a way that doesn't just, you know, ultimately drain our resources to the point where some future time, we're unable to continue to provide them. So, you know, without saying much more than that, I think that this sort of fits very much into that same category of issue.
I think we have to continue to look for other organizations and agencies that might provide grant funding or sponsorships for some of these programs. I think that that's really got to be part of our plan going forward.
And use those advocacy organizations that we pay those fees to, to make sure that they're helping us to lobby our county, state, and federal folks to provide the funding that they're supposed to be providing for these programs as well.
Exactly, yeah.
Go ahead, Michelle.
1426 is the Activity Center, located on page 192. It is down 3.08% for FY17. This year marks the 18th year of operation. We're looking forward to scheduled updates, included paint, new carpet, and partitions, and there are no significant changes.
Great.
1427 is the Gaithersboro Aquatic Center, starting on page 196. It is down 15.25% for FY17. Following a two-and-a-half-year closure, the facility has continued growth since its reopening in September of 2014. There are no significant changes.
Glad to see that it's come back.
Fair, too.
I mean, it was closed a lot longer than we expected, but it was clear that a lot of people were waiting for it, and it's great to see the growth.
Thank you. Okay, 1428 is Miniature Golf, located on page 200. It is up 2.39% for FY17. The course reopens on May 6 with new features, and will have expanded spring hours to include Friday nights under the lights. This facility will undergo its planned renovation utilizing a state bond bill following the season. There are no significant changes. 1429, The Picnic Pavilion, located on page 203, is down 3.95% for FY17. Reservations are already soaring for the season, with most weekend slots already booked, and there are no significant changes.
Pound for pound, they may be our best moneymakers.
They absolutely are.
Agree. Okay, 1430, Winter Lights, beginning on page 205, is up 9.11% for FY17. In FY16, the wrapping and draping of select trees, new displays, and enhancements to special events help draw the highest attendance in 10 years. FY17 funding will continue to support these efforts. General Operating Supplies increased by $10,000 for the purchase of new light displays, complementing the castle purchased last year. Staff is making efforts to replace or refurbish aging displays and is looking toward a new themed area to be debuted for the 25th anniversary in 2020. Rental and use charges increased by $10,800 to fund the rental of a bucket truck required for the installation and takedown of the larger light displays, in the amount of $9,800, and a generator needed to heat the special events tent for $1,000. 1436, Special Events, on page 209, is down 1.42% for FY17. The upcoming year will include enhancements to Oktoberfest designed to reduce food and beverage lines and to offer new ways to enjoy mainstage entertainment. Advertising decreased by $5,000 to reflect actuals that included reduction in advertising in FY16 for the already well-attended Oktoberfest. Rental and use charges decreased by $15,335 to reflect actual trends and expenditures for large event equipment rentals. 1437, Museums, located on page 213, is up .38% for FY17. Attendance to the community museum continues to grow. Staff is creating new interactive exhibits and interesting programs to meet the growing interest in this facility. There are no significant changes.
Is our programming and observatory park included in this?
It is.
Okay.
1438, The Kentlands Mansion, beginning on page 217, is down 1.45% for FY17. The Si Garden Project will be completed this fiscal year. Staff is excited about new programs and rentals that this new space will offer, and there are no significant changes. Overall, the department is down 3.41%.
Thank you, Michelle. Questions, comments? Thank you very much. Next, Planning and Code.
Welcome, John.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, John.
The Planning and Code Administration budget begins on page 219, with significant changes starting on page 221, and the summary budget on page 223. The FY17 departmental budget is down about 4.5% from FY16 despite the addition of three new full-time employees. Activity 1134, Environmental Services, begins on page 226 and is down 49% due to miscellaneous professional services decreasing $150,000 due to the one-time urban forestry study happening in FY16, as well as a decrease in one full-time position. The 1134 budget before you reflects the transfer of two existing positions to the stormwater management team at Public Works, plus the addition of one new environmental planner. So there's a net decrease of one employee. Now, there are a couple of changes tonight that are additional organizational changes that are planned but not reflected in the budget before you. And one of the changes is in 1134. They will, this change, these changes will be reflected in the final budget with no bottom-line changes to the overall city budget. So the two remaining positions in Environmental Services are planned now to be split, with one position as well as the 1134 budget moving to the city manager's office. The new environmental planner position, which is proposed to be added, will be moved to the 1194 Planning Division budget. And that's the first of two changes, but the second one I'll tell you about later. So any questions on 1134?
Nope, go right ahead.
Okay. Activity 1192, which is administration, mostly the front desk staff, begins on page 230 and is down 4% due to fewer part-time hours and general belt tightening. But the one significant change in 1192 is an increase of $12,000 due to increased acceptance of credit cards in the regular processing of our fees and their processing fees. So that's an additional $12,000 in the budget. Any questions on 1192?
Nope, go right ahead.
We don't, do we pass those processing fees on to applicants?
We have a 1% automation fee on all, I'm sorry, 10% automation fee on all of our fees. So effectively, we are passing that through. But we are seeing more use of the credit cards, so therefore, we have to increase the fees.
Sure.
Activity 1194, The Planning Division, starts on page 235 and is up 7% due to the addition of a new transportation planner position. The other change, organizational change that is planned but not reflected in this budget, is that Activity 1142, Housing and Community Development, which is currently housed in Finance, will be moved to Planning and Code. Any questions on 1194?
When do we think we'll have the new transportation planner onboard?
As soon as you approve the budget, we'll start, we'll advertise it.
I didn't know if you had somebody in mind or whatever, but.
We do not have anybody in mind. It will be probably a national search, and we'll advertise it as soon as the budget's approved. It'll probably take two or three months. Any other? Activity 1196, Permits and Inspections, begins on page 239. And this budget is shown as down 5%, but there was a miscalculation of part-time hours that needs to be added back, and that will increase the budget such that it will be down 2.5%. So it's going from, on the books right now, it's down 5%, it'll be down 2.5%. It's from, going from 1.85 part-time positions back to 2.75, which is the same that we've had for the last couple of years. Any questions on 1196? Activity 1197, Neighborhood Services, begins on page 243 and is up 7% due to the addition of an additional code officer position, as well as $30,000, significant change for an additional vehicle for that position. Neighborhood Services also has a significant change decrease of $25,000 in the abatement fund to reflect actual usage of that fund. Any questions on Neighborhood Services?
Nope, go right ahead.
Okay, finally, Activity 1198, Animal Control, starts on page 248 and is down almost 4% due to general belt tightening. No, no significant changes in animal control. And that's all I have for Planning and Code. Any questions?
I have a hypothetical.
And I think, I think you're the person to ask this question, but Tony can correct me if I'm wrong, because of the code enforcement aspect of your department. Hypothetically, if in the coming fiscal year, the council were to pass a ban on smoking on all city property, is there sufficient funding and resources in the budget to do whatever's necessary to implement that in terms of enforcement, as well as, I don't know, signage, whatever else might come along with that? Or does there need to be additional funding in the budget for something like that if, hypothetically, it were to happen?
From the code perspective, I mean, we are adding the additional position. We just added last year's position. I believe I would be comfortable saying that we would be adequately staffed with these additional positions.
You know, on the expectation that enforcement would generally be complaint-driven.
Yeah.
We would have the staff to respond to that. And signage, I think we'd be okay if we had to take amount for signage out of contingency, we could do that, too.
Okay, thanks.
So in terms of, you use the expression belt tightening a couple of times, and just wondering, what's the reason for belt tightening? Is it because we're improving efficiency and spending less money? Or is there an objective in belt tightening to reduce expenses?
I would actually, I would say it's more sharpening our pencils on what is reality, because we look very carefully, and Tony drives this, and Stephanie drives this, to look at the line items and how we spent them in prior years. And if we haven't spent them, we take them out. And primarily, that's what we've done here.
So it's to reflect actual expenses rather than projected that has ended up being, giving us a surplus or unused funds?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Because, yeah, when belt tightening means a lot of different things to different people, so I just want to make sure that we're not actually reducing services or things like that because of that effort, and I think that's important. So maybe a different expression would be
Perhaps.
matching the reality to, you know.
Point well taken. It's a balance between, you know, what we have in the operating budget and then what we have in personnel. And the fact that we've increased our personnel by three positions will obviously increase our service level.
Right, right. Well, I mean, the other issue of code enforcement is, I think, as we continue to grow and offer more services, and some of the other things we've been talking about recently, that's an area where we're definitely going to need to boost so that we can turn things around quickly and, you know, cover what we need to cover, what our responsibilities are. So, anyway.
Any other questions or comments before we move on? Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have the police.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening. The police department budget begins on page 251. It is activity number 1211, and the budget decreased by 3/10 of 1% for fiscal year '17. The proposed FY17 budget includes adding two new police officer positions. This will increase our authorized strength from 57 sworn to 59 officers. And it also includes adding a police technology systems administrator to our staffing. On pages 252 and 253, there are 10 significant changes. Some of those significant changes are the following. Under 1211 Police Department is the first bullet on page 252, account number 526,000, machinery and equipment. It increased by $29,845 due to equipment purchases needed for the two new officer positions. It also includes $4,620 for outfitting the 22 patrol vehicles that are currently equipped with prisoner transport cages. We're going to add automatic seatbelt systems on those cars. So whenever a prisoner's placed inside of a prisoner transport cage, they will automatically be seatbelted in, it's a very modest expense, about $210 per system there to outfit the 22 cars. So I think it's money well spent. The second bullet on page 252 shows an increase of $16,172 for IT services. The third bullet, an increase of $5,540 for the crime analyst data management, and an increase of $26,946 for miscellaneous professional services, and that's outlined in the fourth bullet there. On the next page, second bullet, account number 552,500, vehicle and equipment gasoline expenses. This decreased by $38,600 due to a decrease in gas usage and also a lower price per gallon. The fourth bullet, five, account number 568,300, forfeiture expenditures. It increased by $10,000 as this account was not budgeted last year. This, this is funding that was transferred from the forfeiture account to the forfeiture expenditures account to clearly show all non-budgeted items that may be purchased. And essentially, what this means is that if something's not included in my budget, an unexpected expense arise for an item, I would pull it out of this account. Although it's an accounting transfer, really, it didn't. It didn't increase by $10,000. That's put in there as a placeholder, so should the situation arise where I have an unbudgeted item that I need to purchase, this is the account that I would pull that from. And the last bullet on that page, account number 596,000, vehicles and equipment. This increased by $165,800 due to increase in the fleet level by two patrol cars for the two new officer positions, and also two additional patrol cars to increase our fleet inventory to meet operational needs. We'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Chief, I think you ran over the one for the speed camera calibration, 573,000.
573,000?
It's like the second to last bullet. Unless we're looking at two different sheets here.
573,000?
Yeah.
Repair and maintenance?
Yeah, that increased by $13,105 for the annual calibration of the speed cameras.
And this is?
And that's going to enable to us to integrate it into the new HD cameras.
So, we get a better read on license plates, or?
It's an HD, it's a clear picture quality.
Okay.
Could I, a quick question? Under vehicle and equipment gasoline expenses decreased due to decrease in gasoline usage, are cars getting better mileage, or are we driving less? I don't think we're driving less, I'm just curious how.
Yeah, I think it's relatively the same as far as the average miles per gallon. There's a lot of factors that come into that, in particular, how long those cars idle, which is not reflected on the odometer, of course. But, you know, we have these as take-home vehicles, so the longer, the further people live outside of the city, there's going to be increased mileage on those cars, and as a result, increased gasoline usage. That's one of those numbers with gasoline usage that fluctuates. However, looking at prior year's usage, we were budgeted at around $200,000, and we were continually underspending that amount. And that's what resulted in also the reduction in amount.
Great. Well, it's certainly a boost having, I think, to all of our budgets related to vehicular equipment with the reduction in gas and fuel prices is a good thing, so, thanks.
Most definitely.
Chief, how does our police officer coverage per capita compare to other municipalities in the area? Low, high?
Yeah. If you look at what we have with the county police having concurrent jurisdiction, coupled with the 57 officers I have today, per capita, we're higher than, you know, the national average on that, with both departments policing the city.
Great. Any other questions or comments? No? Thank you, Chief.
Okay, sure. You're welcome.
Next, we have Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, Council. With me this evening are also the three division heads who will be able to answer any questions that I'm unable to answer. So, with that, the Public Works Department continues to be committed to providing a high level of quality and cost-effectiveness in the services that we provide to our customers. And we have our operating budget comprised of 30 activities. Not all of those have significant changes. However, I will go over those that do. In aggregate, for fiscal year '17, the overall budget decrease was 1.75 over the budgeted amount for fiscal year '16. The first activity of the facilities management budget begins on page 280. It is activity number 1150, and it's down by 11.2% over fiscal year '16's figure. This activity is responsible for maintenance of all city buildings, including routine repairs and things of that nature, custodial, pest management, and energy. For the significant changes, the object 536300, contract cleaning services decreased by $10,000 due to relocation of funds to other activity centers. 572000, which is repair and maintenance of buildings and facilities, decreased by $50,000 due to the reallocation of funds to other activity centers. And 596000, vehicles and equipment decreased by $35,000, as no new vehicles were requested for this activity center in '17.
Can I ask you just briefly about that one? No new vehicles were requested because there wasn't apparently a need, or no new vehicles requested because folks felt that we had to cut back, or what?
In looking at it, it was felt, in the, when we discussed it, that there wasn't really a pressing need for the vehicle.
Okay.
So, that's the reason.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. The Buildings and Grounds City Hall budget begins on page 285. It is activity number 1151, and it is down by 6.4% for fiscal year '17. This activity involves cleaning, maintenance, and inspections of City Hall, the City Hall Office building, including the council chambers, and includes day-to-day repair and maintenance as provided by the facilities staff. The significant changes for this activity, the object 536400, contract maintenance services, that increased by $5,853 to account for various service contracts at this site, including the elevator backflow testing, fire alarm monitoring, pest controls, and generator upgrades. 550000, which is electric, decreased by $35,000. That was based largely on historical expenditures, right, you know, sort of harmonizing our costs based on that. 572000, repair and maintenance of buildings and facilities, that increased by $15,000 to cover basement waterproofing in the electrical room and backup server room HVAC replacement. Any questions on that?
For electric, and I guess this applies to anywhere we're budgeting for electric, are we taking into account the possibility of rate increases on rates?
Well, yes. Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
We are.
Okay.
And we're comfortable that the figure that we've sort of budgeted here will cover, you know, the likely expenditures that we'll see for the fiscal year.
Okay.
Great. Thanks.
The Buildings and Grounds Public Service Facility, which is the Public Works Facility, budget begins on page 289. It's activity number 1153, and it is up by 110.04% for fiscal year 2017. The significant changes associated with that are 550000, electric, that decreased by $5,000 based again on historical expenditures. 572000, the repair and maintenance of buildings and facilities increased by $140,500 to cover the following items: the sand filter maintenance, the hydrojetting of the green roof drains, replacement of the Public Works gate, which is a little, you know, approaching the end of its economic life, the fire alarm panel repair and upgrade, airline improvements within the fleet bay area, truck bay light upgrades, and existing, the existing salt barn column damage repair. Are there any questions on that?
I mean, some of these seem like they should, they're CIP issues, but, you know, I guess you guys have a good reason for putting them into operating.
Yes, they're really not very large. While the expenditure associated with it is not insignificant, the project itself is not really a very, very large project, or it doesn't have very many phases in it, so it was felt that we could deal with it on the operating side more efficiently than making the CIP.
Okay.
The next activity, Buildings and Grounds Kentland's Mansion budget begins on page 293. It's activity number 1158, and it's up by 0.65% for fiscal year 2017. This activity really is responsible for the care and maintenance of Kentland's mansion, and the primary costs associated with this are utilities and interior and exterior building maintenance. The significant changes are 536, are found in 536400, contract maintenance services, and that increased by $5,385 to account for various service contracts at this site, you know, the backflow testing, fire alarms, pest controls, grease traps, et cetera. And 572000, repair and maintenance of buildings and facilities decreased by $5,000 based on historical expenditures. Any questions? Okay. The Buildings and Grounds Benjamin Gaither Center budget begins on page 295. It's activity 1159, and it is up by 67.04% for fiscal year 2017. The significant changes associated with this activity are 536000, miscellaneous professional services, that decreased by $6,000 due to realignment of funds to 536400. Within 536400, contract maintenance services that increased by $12,696 to account for various service contracts necessary to keep this site in good order. And these, those include snow removal, backflow testing, fire alarm monitoring, pest control, and grease traps. 572000, repair and maintenance buildings and facilities, that increased by $50,000, and that, that expense is largely to cover the city's portion of the parking lot milling, paving, and striping project, as the parking lot is in need of some work and is being done. Any questions on that?
Go right ahead.
Okay. The Buildings and Grounds KC Community Center budget begins on page 297. It's activity 1160, and it is up 4.5% for fiscal year 2017. The significant changes associated with this activity are found in 536400, contract maintenance services, and that increased by $5,986 due to the realignment of funds from other accounts for, to cover service contracts, service contracts, excuse me, at this facility. 572000, repair and maintenance of buildings and facilities, that decreased by $5,000 due to a major CIP project that is currently underway at this facility, that will reduce our operating costs over time. Next item, the Buildings and Grounds Public Safety Facility budget, that begins on 301. Now, this is a new activity, and it is activity 1162, and the costs associated with this are for the new police facility. The significant changes will be found in, are found in 536300, contract cleaning services, that increased by $5,000. 536400, contract maintenance services, and that increased by $6,510 due to it being a new facility. 550000, electric, and that increased by $12,000. 550200, water, that increased by $6,000. And 572000, repair and maintenance of buildings and facilities, that increased by $10,000 due to, again, it being a new facility and us not having the time series of costs yet. We feel that would cover the projected expenses associated with it.
Makes sense.
The Buildings and Grounds GAC budget begins on page 303.
GAC being?
Sorry, Gethysburg Aquatic Center.
Thank you.
Pardon me. Thank you. Begins on page 303. It's activity number 1164, and it is down 40.05% for fiscal year 2017. This activity is solely, you know, concerned with the maintenance and upkeep of the, of our portion of the Gethysburg Aquatic Center. Primary costs include utilities, building and pool maintenance. The significant changes associated with this are found in 572000, repair and maintenance of buildings and facilities, and that decreased by $11,000, to be more in line with the historical spending at this facility.
Okay.
Buildings and Grounds Activity Center at Borre Park budget begins on page 305. It's activity 1165, and it is up 2.44% for fiscal year 2017. The significant changes associated with this activity are found in 550200, that's water, and that decreased by $10,000 based on historical usage over the last four years. 572000, and that's repair and maintenance of buildings and facilities, that increased by $15,000 to allow us to complete a project on the side of the building that would fix grading and drainage issues. The project was moved from the CIP budget to operating, again, for its scale, and it felt to be more efficiently handled in this manner.
Okay.
The Buildings and Grounds Gethysburg Arch Barn budget begins on page 307. It's activity 1166, and it is up 0.44% for fiscal year 2017. The significant change associated with this is found in 536400, contract maintenance services, and that increased by $6,720 to account for various service contracts needed to be performed at the site, such as water treatment, elevator backflow testing, fire alarm, and pest control. The Buildings and Grounds Water Park at Borre Park budget begins on page 309. Excuse me. It is activity 1167, and it is up by 18.38% for fiscal year 2017. The significant changes are found in 550200, water, that increased by $12,000, again, based on analysis of historical use over the past, the last four years. And 550700, recycling service trash collection, which increased by $7,173 due to additional dumpster needs during the summer months when it's, you have more events at that facility. The Buildings and Grounds Gethysburg Youth Center at Old Town budget begins on page 315. It is activity number 1170, and it is up 82.10% for fiscal year 2017. The significant change is found in 572000, repair and maintenance of buildings and facilities, that increased by $35,000 to allow a project to be completed at the rear of the building to fix a grading issue between Diamond and the building itself. The project was moved from the CIP budget to operating, again, for scale and efficiency.
Okay.
Is that a water issue?
It's a drainage issue. The slope pitches water towards the building.
Towards the building? I remember that.
It's a little lower.
It's lower than the?
Right. I think some grading would fix that. We feel some grading would fix that, so that's something that could be handled more efficiently on the operating side.
Yeah.
The Buildings and Grounds Parking Facility budget begins on page 321. It's activity number 1175, and it is down by 6.45% for fiscal year 2017. The significant changes are found in 536400, contract maintenance services, and that increased by $10,124 to account for various service contracts needed to be performed at the site. 555000, electric, that decreased by $5,000 due to historical averages, to bring the fiscal year '17 budget closer to historical use. And 572000, repair and maintenance of buildings and facilities, that decreased by $9,300 as elevator maintenance completed in FY '16 was not repeated. The decrease was offset by expected light conversion costs as well.
Michael, can I ask you? We had a report a while back on the status of the pedestrian bridge over the tracks from the parking structure to the lot on East Diamond. Is that include, that's not included here? Is that a separate item?
That's a separate item. That would be a, in CIP.
CIP?
Yes.
Okay.
That'd be a CIP program.
Thanks.
You're welcome. The Streets and Special Projects Budget begins on page three twenty-seven. It's activity number thirteen twelve and it is down by twenty-six point five four percent for fiscal year seventeen. The significant changes are found in five two two zero 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 General Operating Supplies that increased by forty-three thousand dollars to account for additional salt storage at our new salt building. Basically, the new salt building has doubled, more or less doubled our capacity to store salt. And that we found based to be the most efficient way to keep, keep the icing salt on, on hand to account for the vicissitudes of the, the weather. Five two nine zero 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 Building and Construction Supplies that decreased by thirty-five thousand five hundred to reflect the cost reduction of contracting some of the sidewalk replacement work around the city. And five three six four zero zero Contract Services that increased by one hundred thousand dollars to contract sidewalk replacement due to restructuring of the Streets and Special Projects team.
What are we count, accounting for this discussion of road replacement in the city? Is that in this area or is it?
CIP.
CIP.
CIP. The Fleet Maintenance Budget begins on page three three zero. It is activity thirteen fifty and it is up by two point five percent for fiscal year twenty seventeen. The significant change in this activity is found in five two two zero 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 General Operating Supplies. And that increased by ten thousand dollars for a new scan tool, computer system for evaluating trucks and car computer systems. The Parks Maintenance Budget begins on page three thirty-seven. It is activity number thirteen forty-three and it is up six point zero one percent for fiscal year twenty seventeen. The significant changes are found in five three six four zero zero Contract Maintenance Services that increased by twenty-five thousand dollars to account for additional maintenance of Constitution Gardens Park. And five nine six zero 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 Vehicles and Equipment increased by one hundred and eleven thousand dollars to purchase one additional trackless unit to assist with mowing, pond maintenance, and snow removal operations.
So Henry will be very happy to see that one. I'll make sure that he, he sees it.
Please do.
And just if I could, for a second, that's the first example of a vehicle appearing in the budget that wouldn't have appeared last year. We're buying twenty-three other vehicles in the replacement fund, but they're replaced, this is net new. We're actually replacing the other two trackless as well. So we're buying about one point six million dollars in vehicles, everything from golf carts to buses and dump trucks. But this is new, so it's now actually in the budget.
Great.
Do we have anybody on staff that's trained in organic pesticide management, green life cycle management of?
We don't, no, we do not, we don't currently, no.
I mean, one of the items that we think we've been talking about is the county's ban on pesticides and whether or not we'll be adopting some iteration of that here in the city. And I think that there was some appetite for, if we're not going to go in that direction, at least adopting more green practices in, in the city. So perhaps the good place to start is by training some staff members, so we have information on that.
Okay, it's something that we would look into, I, I don't know what's involved, but we would certainly take a look at it and, and, you know, take appropriate steps to address it.
Thank you.
The Mowing and Special Pickups Budget begins on page three fifty-one. It's activity thirteen forty-four and it is up by two point eight five percent for fiscal year seventeen. The significant changes can be found in five three six four zero zero Contract Maintenance Services that decreased by ten thousand dollars to reflect actual spend, funds spent. Five six seven zero 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 Rental and Use Charges that increased by nineteen thousand dollars to cover the additional tipping fees at the Montgomery County Transfer Station. Five seven four zero zero Repair and Maintenance of Vehicles that increased by twelve thousand dollars to cover additional repairs and maintenance of fleet, of fleet vehicles, associated mow vehicles. And five nine six zero 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 Vehicles and Equipment that increased by one hundred and fifty thousand dollars due to the purchase of a new single axle dump truck. The Recycling Budget begins on page three forty-five. It's activity number thirteen forty-five and it is down by zero point two two percent for fiscal year twenty seventeen. The significant changes can be found in five two two zero zero General Operating Supplies. And that decreased by eleven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to account for a reduction in the recycling carts that were ordered. And five six seven zero zero Rental and Use Charges that increased by eight thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars to account for increases in the curbside recycling program and increases in homes receiving this service. The Street Lighting Budget begins on page three fifty. It is activity number thirteen ninety-three and it is up one point nine six for fiscal year twenty seventeen. The significant change can be found in five seven three zero 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 Repair Maintenance of Repair and Maintenance of Machinery and Equipment. And that increased by twelve thousand dollars to account for costs associated with a new lighting contract.
The lighting contract is with a vendor that's going to assist with repair and maintenance or is that what that is?
Yes, yes, it is.
Thanks.
You're welcome. The Traffic Control Budget begins on page three fifty-two. It's activity number thirteen ninety-seven and it is up by one point five nine percent for fiscal year seventeen. The significant changes in this activity can be found in five three six zero 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 Miscellaneous Professional Services that decreased by twenty-five thousand dollars to place funding in the correct expenditure code in the budget. Five three six four zero zero Contract Maintenance Services that increased by twenty-five thousand dollars to place funding in the correct expenditure code in the budget. And five five zero 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 Electric that increased by ten thousand dollars to account for utility rate, projected utility rate adjustments.
So there in that last line item, there is a specific reference to increasing amount budgeted to account for utility rate adjustments. Does that mean that, that same accounting for those adjustments is just sort of incorporated by reference in those other, those other items even if it isn't called out specifically?
Yes, that's what, that's what it means. We, and for this particular one, I felt that, we felt that the rates that we were, we were budgeting were, were a bit on the low side. So this would cover adequately projected expenditures for this fiscal year.
Gotcha, great.
And.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one question and perhaps I should have asked this when Michelle was up, is about maintenance and upkeep of our turf field. Is that covered under this budget or is covered under recreation in terms of parks?
And if. Would be covered under our, the parks maintenance, yeah, parks maintenance would.
Do we have an assessment of the difference between servicing that park or that field compared to the other fields? Or a, a natural grass field?
So for the amount of use, you know, the, it's actually less. And we have to put infill material back in it, which costs about two thousand dollars per sack. And we're putting about four of those in each year. But the overall maintenance of the field is down because we're not aerating, overseeding, using fertilizer on it and stuff like that. So we go out there, we maintain it once a week. And then basically, you know, through the spring, summer, it, it basically runs itself. In the winter time, little bit of issue with freezing cold temperatures, really not this past year, but the winter before when it was really, really cold, the field actually froze because it rained and then it got really cold. And then we had to take it out of service for a little bit, but, and obviously this year with the thirty-inch snowstorm. It went out of service for a couple of days.
Yeah, but, so, other than that, the, the field is not out of service like if we were planning and the field actually had to, to close it to use.
Definitely so.
Whether it's a softball field or a soccer field, we're not losing that time.
It could rain in the morning and they just go ahead and play on it in the afternoon. It actually can hold, it can take about six to ten inches of rain a day. So, you know, it's, it really, it's made to really, you know, take a lot of water and to be able to play on the field.
That's, that's a savings in itself if it's, continues.
Definitely so. And we have another high-use field that we're going to look at doing that in the, in the future. And you'll see it in FY eighteen. It'll be Robertson Park Field Number Three.
Right.
We're going to look at converting that over to a synthetic turf field with the organic infill.
That's great.
And the other side, even though I'm, I'm a big fan because of the increased use is, of course, it's a million-dollar asset with about a twenty-year life. So it's fifty thousand dollars a year replacement, which is more than we spend on a typical field in maintenance and upkeep, but you get so much more use.
Well, if you amortize the cost of maintaining the field over twenty years, a natural turf field, it's probably going to end up being almost the same price of, of replacing that field.
At our standards, probably would.
Yeah, so, you know, we're, I guess we're breaking even, but we're not losing any days of use of the field.
Yeah, we're breaking even cost-wise, but in terms of usage.
Uses, we're, yeah, we're actually increasing, so that's, you know, that's what our citizens want.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, we're going to dive into the CIP. Welcome, Dennis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Now that everybody's been numbered to death by now, I'm going to talk about the Capital Improvements Program, or affectionately known as the CIP. Again, for the members of the public who aren't familiar with this program, this is a five-year capital improvements program which tries to project out expenditures and revenues for those capital improvements over the, a five-year period. In addition, there are four general categories that we lump all the CIP or capital improvements into. And those are city facilities, community enhancements, which tend to mean we're creating a new type of facility, like a new park. Recreation and leisure, which is often a lot of times some of the larger commitments in terms of the maintenance of our facilities in the park system. And then transportation and environment, which includes street improvements and other items associated with transportation. I will note, we've added one new CIP this year, and that is the Bridges and Culverts. So that's at the very end of your book. In terms of where the CIP begins, that's on page three fifty-six. Pages three sixty and three sixty-one talk about the total revenues and expenditures. For FY seventeen, we are looking at roughly thirteen million, just over thirteen million in revenue. And that comes from the general fund and also any grants that we receive, whether those be state or county or federal grants. In terms of expenditures, we're looking at spending just under fifteen million. That's approximately a twelve percent increase from what we budgeted in FY sixteen. I will note, this is kind of the third year, we've actually been working on what I call right sizing the CIP. In the past, we would often jumble the CIP more than we have the last three years. And so you'll see at least in, you know, the first three years of the CIP. So for next year, that would be seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. We don't have a lot of new projects. We do add a few new projects, but we try to keep them very consistent. That helps with staff in terms of managing their hours and managing their workload. And then newer projects are added in the out years. So you'd be looking, you know, at twenty-one for some of those aspects. With that, I'll kind of go over some of the highlights, I won't go over every CIP. Some of these will actually be things that I just want to bring to your attention that we'll actually be doing in FY seventeen. And some are actually new projects that we might have added or projects that we have moved from sixteen to seventeen because of various reasons. And City Hall, really one of the biggest things that will be have going on is really the roof replacement. It's long overdue, but that will be occurring in FY seventeen. Some of the newer projects we have are an electronic message board sign out front. This will be similar to, although on a smaller scale, the one that's being placed at Bore Park. And then a number of office renovations, mostly modular furniture because we will be doing a needs assessment for City Hall to try and do those aspects. And again, those are on pages three sixty-two and three sixty-three. On pages three sixty-six and three sixty-seven is really the public service facility, and that's the Public Works Facility. We will be constructing a new wash bay and that was actually moved from FY sixteen. We are running a little bit behind on schedule on that one. One of the newer items that will appear in FY seventeen is actually the reconstruction of a server room. Currently, that's in an electrical closet, and so we're having some code issues with that. So it'll be moving outside of that area. On pages three sixty-eight and three sixty-nine are, is our replacement fund and also improvements to sidewalks, handicap ramps, and bicycle paths. One of the priorities Council has asked us to look at is trying to look at the missing links of pathways that we have within our system. And there are funds budgeted, actually in FY sixteen, we repurposed some funds to get that project rolling. And then there continued through FY eighteen in terms of the initial design. Final design will occur in FY eighteen for a number of those projects. And construction actually won't start until FY eighteen through FY twenty-one.
Dennis, you knew I was going to chime in on this one, right? Do we have, where did the number come from? I mean, there's a fair chunk of money in there, but at this point, we haven't really done the study, so.
And again, you'll notice there aren't any identifying projects. We actually just threw a round number in and kind of divided it out over the years. I think as we get the study done that shows the missing pathway links, we'll actually be able to refine that CIP.
All right, because if the bicycle, the Transportation Committee asks us for a bridge over two seventy, these numbers are out, out of whack.
They're very much out of whack. They're looking at minor improvements over the long haul.
All right, and we'll try to keep them under control too.
Yeah, total, you know, half a million dollars at the most, so.
Economics ask.
So Dennis, what's the amount allocated, Dennis, for the FY seventeen gap study that we've been talking about?
It's an additional thirty thousand and we're using a thirty thousand amount in FY sixteen.
Do we think thirty thousand enough, is enough?
That's the estimate we have at this point. Until we actually know all the gaps, we won't have a real number, so.
So some concern expressed from, to me by members of the Transportation Committee or member that thirty thousand wouldn't be enough in FY seventeen to conduct a sufficient gap study.
Again, it would be a total of sixty between the two fiscal years, so. And again, it's just the gap study, it's not any design for the construction of those projects.
What about consideration for immediate design and construction if it's identified in the gap study as something that could be addressed in FY seventeen rather than in out years?
Again, the option would be for us to use either contingency or then to come back to you and ask for reallocation of those funds. Again, in terms of the balance of the fund, there's considerable balance in that fund. So I wouldn't be too worried about having some expenditures we might have to come back to you and ask for reallocation of those.
I think we also need to get a better grasp on usage. And to be clear, having it skip over other capital projects, you know, will have a ripple effect. So I, I agree with Dennis that there's sufficient balance in the fund to react pretty quickly when we, when we finally figure out what it is we need to do.
Again, as Tony noted, some of the issues that we have are actually trying to schedule and the workload with staff currently. A lot of CIP projects take more than one year to implement, some take as many as three. Some are typically about two, one for design and then one for construction. And so just balancing the staff time it takes for all these projects is kind of what I've referred to as the right sizing. I think in the past, we've had a very big wish list and we often haven't made that wish list coincide with our staffing levels.
We should probably look at the wish list in terms of how do we prioritize our wishes.
And again, some of that we take from council direction, others we also meet together and talk about what priorities are more relevant at this particular time with department requests. We have implemented a number of new CIP kind of processing things that you don't see happening behind the scenes. We have a longer lead time with how we do CIP. A department actually has to come up with a request. We meet with that department and then try to figure out a better scoping before it actually gets into the CIP. In the past, we've actually thrown out a number and often those numbers were off. So we're trying to refine that process.
Okay.
Old Town Revitalization, which is on pages three seventy and three seventy-one. I just want to point out that we've actually just kind of moved those timelines around partly to better reflect staffing needs regarding to those and moving up or keeping in line the Park Plaza area to make sure that was on target. Street resurfacing, really.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't realize we were moving on from Old Town Revitalization. We have about one and a half million for the project in FY eighteen and nineteen for streetscape improvement. Is that, I mean, is, is that three fifty?
Is that, I mean, is that 355, or is that the area around City Hall?
That is actually tended to be related to East Diamond for the portions that haven't been improved. So either in front of the Fishman site or actually just past the intersection of Summit.
So what do we get for, what does one and a half million dollars buy us in that context?
Again, that's part of the concept that we're actually working on, what we could get for those dollar amounts. Because again, it really depends. I can tell you, we're not undergrounding all the utilities within downtown for those dollar amounts.
Right.
We'd be looking at more streetscape improvements, improved lighting, which we've been studying, and also benches or other amenities, maybe removing some of the canopies that were put in as earlier construction if those aren't feasible anymore, things like that.
All right. I just hope we're looking at that expenditure and looking at what value it really brings and whether it moves the needle in the direction that we want it to move. One and a half million isn't a lot of money in the city budget, but it's a lot of money.
That does not include anything on the 355 corridor.
Right. Okay, thanks.
I would add that I strongly suspect, having seen the concept plan for the plaza, that it's not going to come in 750,000.
So that, that money is the plaza money, or is it some?
That's the plaza money.
No, that would be, that's different. This would be streetscape.
This is streetscape, yeah.
This was streetscape, yeah.
But again, it all depends on what Council priorities are. We will be coming back with kind of some design options, and then Council will set some priorities related on those design options. So that number may need to move, and that's one of the reasons we moved it further out, because we don't have a better idea of what's going to be expended.
That's fair. Thanks.
Street resurfacing, which is on pages 374 and 375, really the only thing I, two things I wanted to point out is we actually removed Edison Drive repaving from that project for a number of reasons. And then also, I will note that we're actually trying a new approach with both this one and street reconstruction. Actually, on May 2nd, you will be looking at a pavement management system where we're actually going to go out and rate all the streets within the city in terms of, you know, fair, good, poor, and then we're actually going to try to reallocate those numbers as we get those back in. You will see a kind of an increase in the funding level for those in anticipation that we're actually going to have to do more projects in the future. We don't believe we're actually keeping up with the degree of maintenance that we need to on our public streets. So you'll see an increase of, you know, we're moving it up to a million dollars a year in funding through every year in the CIP for both of those CIPs.
Dennis, did we skip over property acquisition and disposition?
We did, because I didn't see, we don't really have any significant changes there, but I can address any questions you have. The biggest thing we have is we've acquired a property on 355 that we've allocated funding for the demolition. We try to do that. Also, you'll note, one of the issues that it doesn't appear is the actual acquisition occurred in '16, and we weren't really sure on that.
The only reason I brought it up is that there's a tremendous amount of money in that fund. That's basically a fund of money that's been set aside, $16 million for potential acquisitions? Is that what we're looking at here?
There's only a million two.
Million two.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at.
That's the unencumbered.
Oh, that's prior year's budget that I'm looking at. All right, sorry.
The 14 million was what we have spent.
We've already spent.
Just to reiterate, Dennis is going to go over the highlights as he sees them, but if, if he skips over, as Neil just did, if he skips over something that you think is important, then by all means, call it out and we'll go back to it.
Okay.
The next one I'm going to talk about is on pages 376 and 77, which is Bora Park at Summit Hall Farm. We moved a couple of projects, partly for the MOU issue. I think we were back before you with the MOU with MCPS regarding the electronic message board sign. We also moved miniature golf renovations just from a timing standpoint. We needed to get that facility open and didn't believe we could get those renovations done. A new major project in FY '17, I just want you to make aware of, and it's been budgeted for a while, is the slide replacement at the water park. And then we actually have a new one in later years, which is in FY '20. That'll be a pretty significant dollar amount, is the activity center roof replacement. And then also, we have the filtration at the water park that we'll have to design and construct.
Didn't we just?
We did that at the.
Upgrade the water filtration system when we did the expansion?
At the AGAC or the Gaithersburg Aquatic Center. We did not, I don't believe, recently during my time period. Now, it may have already been done once before, but these have pretty short lifespans.
It was the pump. I don't think it was the, the.
I thought it was the filtration system, too, wasn't it? When, when Bill was still, Bill Ballou was still.
That would have been.
That was before we did the, the expansion of the, of the lap pool.
That would have been probably beyond the lifespan of the filtration system.
Should we bring Michelle up here?
I don't know. Do you remember, Michelle?
Ouch. As part of the renovations that we did, I think it was 2004.
Was it 200?
Of the water park where we completed, completely gutted the facility and.
That wasn't 2004.
2000.
It was after I was elected, so it was about 2010, maybe?
Well, what we did in the pump and filter room was replaced all the sand. We added UV.
Yeah.
But all of the pumps and motors and all of that are original.
Yeah.
And they're due for replacement.
All right.
Okay.
Well, I knew we replaced something in there, because we got a tour of it, so. Well, you, you remember, so.
Yeah.
I remember that, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the next CIP is street reconstruction, and I pointed that out earlier. That's on pages 378 to 379. Just to note that, you know, we are trying to look at increasing the funding and also probably anticipating increased expenditures. For next year, the big issue will be Quince Orchard Boulevard, and we have had some discussions with you regarding to that street reconfiguration, and we'll also have a new update for you sometime this summer. On pages 380 and 381, I'm only bringing this up on the traffic calming and signalization. We are actually still waiting on the county to complete the study for the signalization improvements, so those actually may move from one year to the next. Technology projects on page 382 through 383. I'll defer to Pete on any specific questions, but we're looking at doing some movement in that. We've moved asset management to FY '17. We also have moved criminal intelligence system for PD to FY '17, and then we have some new projects in FY '20. I will note, this is in addition to some expenditures that we currently have for this fiscal year, which is replacement of sire and some website improvements. I will note, on pages 384 to 385, which is the facilities projects, this tends to be our catch-all projects for a number of different things. I just wanted to point out that in later expenditure, we've actually updated some of the numbers. It's one of the other things we were actually trying to do with the CIP in the past. Because it's a five-year program, we often didn't update the numbers as they moved through the system, which made us further behind. As we all know, construction costs typically go up. Now, there was a period between 2010 and probably 2012 where we actually got really good deals. That probably is no longer the case anymore, so we're trying to make inflation adjustments for some of these projects where we know about them. I'm going to skip the next few projects.
Dennis, can we go back to facilities projects just for a second? There was some mention in the project description of sound studies for the youth centers. What's that, what's that for?
We have some issues at Robertson Park in particular. When you hold a meeting there, the sound isn't exactly conducive to certain types of meetings, and so we would do some sound studies to figure out whether and how we place panels to reduce that noise, that vibration.
It's not so much reducing noise, it's actually making the noise audible. Because, yeah, you got it.
So the next CIP I'm going to address, unless somebody asks me to go back, is on page 390 to 391. These are corridor plan improvements for 355. I just wanted to note that we are currently showing this as being closed after the Forest Oaks Cemetery project. And now comes the questions about the Old Town Park Plaza, which is on pages 392 to 393. I will note that, you know, we have received some considerable influx of money from state funds and through grants and also through a bond bill. We currently have 1 million budgeted for that project. I don't know if that's actually going to be the actual cost, so that may be a change that we're having. I will also note that once that's constructed, we're showing, showing construction here in FY '17, that CIP would be closed.
Do you think the estimate's too conservative or not conservative enough?
Not conservative.
It's too low. It's too low.
Too conservative.
Even with the money from the state?
Again, the way we treat money from the state, it's considered a transfer in, so we often readjust the balance if we're going to get grant funds. We still hold the project to the cost that we originally anticipated it being. I think that's another one where we could have gotten better at getting a better scope initially, but also increasing the cost as time goes by. I don't think we've been very good about increasing the cost. This is a long time coming project, and we kept it relatively the same cost amount.
Yeah.
The Kettlin's Mansion is the next one I was going to address mainly, and these are on pages 398 and 399, partly because we moved most of the projects to FY '18 from FY '17. This is part of our initiative where we're actually trying to do facility needs assessment for buildings, and those studies will start with City Hall, and then the next one is actually the Kettlin's Mansion. We're a little bit behind on those, and the goal is for us to actually look at all the facility as a whole and look at all the components and develop a plan for replacement related to those. Before, we would just do it on a piecemeal basis, so we're trying to come up with 10-year plans for each of those buildings.
It's a pretty pricey project. What are we going to do to the building? Rebuilding it addition, or what's going on here?
We have a lot of ADA issues with that particular building in terms of the elevator access, just general maintenance, because it's an older building. There are also some desires from the departments on how they would like to see use of that building, which might be incorporated in that. Again, all those would be presented as a needs analysis, and then we would get priority direction from the Council. The next CIP I'm going to talk about is the Community Development Block Grant or the HUD Funds, which is on pages 402 to 403. I just wanted to note, you know, we only have two remaining construction projects out of this fund, which are the Smokehouse renovation and the BNO Railroad Station window and door replacement. Once those two projects are completed, we will no longer use this fund for construction projects. All the funds will be used for the housing program. And now my favorite topic, because I talk about it a lot lately, is the Gaithersburg Police Station, which is on pages 406 and 407. We haven't really made any significant changes, but we will be closing fairly soon on the property. We're acquiring for that, so the acquisition will actually take place in FY '16, and we're starting the process for design, and we'll be coming back to the Council with design. One of the issues that we still have to resolve is, we've discussed with you about the potential of moving the Council chamber, so we're going to bring back some options to you, and we may need additional funding should we do that, because we did not anticipate that when we budgeted, and that means moving a lot of the television equipment and other things to that facility. We do have some replacement fund for that, so we can offset that, but I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Dennis, if we, and it's probably, it's obviously premature to discuss this, but the disposition of the current facility where the police, of the police station.
We have not made any analysis of how we might either reuse that structure or disposition of that structure at this particular point in time. We do have other space needs for the city. We will be able to accommodate some of the space needs of City Hall and the new building we're acquiring, but we actually have a lot of off-site storage, so one short-term consideration we are having is moving all the off-site storage to maybe the police station facility, but that's just a consideration at this point.
It's expensive storage.
It is expensive storage, and it's an oncurring fee every month for all the storage. Okay. I also wanted to point out on pages 408 and 409, the Crown Historic Park. We would like to move forward with that project, but I will note that it's really dependent on the transfer of the property from the developer of that site, and we have not had that occur yet. So those timelines may move again. They've moved consistently since I've been here, so I just want you to know that's not our, delay is not our issue. One of the other ones I want to talk about, because we've kind of re-approached how we're doing this, is the Energy Efficiency and Conservation, which is on pages 414 and 415. In the past, we've actually looked at projects. We want to go back and update the projects that are in the CIP or that were in the CIP. We did a study, I believe, back in 2010, and we want to try to update that, so we're actually going to do an energy assessment for all the buildings in FY '17, and then we'll try to piece out what we're actually going to do to those facilities. As Mark noted during his presentation about the synthetic fields, which are on pages 416 and 417, we don't really have any changes, but again, Robertson Park Field Number Three would be the next one on the list. Quince Orchard Park, which is on pages 418 and 419. I just wanted to note that we moved the parking spaces along Orchard Ridge Drive to FY '17. We're actually having an upcoming work session to talk about that and their location to get feedback for the Council, and then the park design will be in FY '18 and construction in FY '19. Again, this park will probably have minimal improvements. It will have some improvements, but it'll mostly be open space. The Consumer Product Safety Commission Park, which is actually the former CPSC site, is on pages 420 and 421. There are really no changes. I just wanted to point out, the Ad Hoc Committee will be coming back to you probably early this summer with a proposed schematic design, and then we'll be moving into full construction design with final construction in FY '17 and '18. It's probably going to be spread out over a couple of years. And finally, as I noted earlier, we do have one new CIP, which is the Bridges and Culverts. That's on pages 422 and 423. It's an omission that we haven't had and is actually a fairly large expenditure. If we would have some replacements that need to occur, and we need to start planning for those, and they currently don't have their own CIP. I think in the past, we've often talked about them as being part of streets, but I think the current staff believes they're actually, should be separated from street reconstruction or street rehabilitation. So the first part is actually doing some inventory and actually looking at those. We do have the county help us on some of those, because they, they do bi-annual inspections or every two years. And that's the end of the regular CIP. Any questions?
Nope. Let's dive into the stormwater management.
On the stormwater management budget or CIP, that begins on pages 425. I just wanted to note, FY '17 is the second year the city has separated out the stormwater management fund from the capital improvements plan. And again, the stormwater management fund supports a number of different aspects, operational expenditures, grant programs, capital improvements, and then the Chesapeake Bay Stormwater Total Maximum Daily Load or TMDL projects, and that's probably the largest portion of the stormwater fund. I will note, as noted earlier by John, we will have some staffing changes within this division. We're actually going to be creating a division within the Public Works Department, so two of the staff who are currently located and planning will move to Public Works, and we'll be adding a new stormwater management program manager to coordinate that whole division. In terms of revenue and expenditures, those begin on page 426 and go through 428. The revenue is actually provided through a couple of different sources. One is the stormwater management fee. That will be approximately just under $4 million. It's a little bit different than we've done in the past. This is actually not a transfer from the general fund. This is actually a direct allocation from the fees collected. So it used to show up in the operating budget as a transfer. That's no longer the case. We actually have other items that are considered as transfers, and I'll get to those in a minute. and I'll get to those in a minute. And again, we do have a rate model, which we talked about when we first set up this fund. The current rate is, you know, twenty dollars and four cents for every five hundred square feet of impervious surface. That's actually allocated to every parcel within the city. There are no exemptions. The city pays their own fee also. Staff is proposing a rate based upon the rate model we developed last year of twenty-two dollars and forty-four cents. So for an average household, which has roughly about twenty-five hundred square feet, that would be an increase of roughly twelve dollars. It's currently about a hundred dollars and twenty cents. It would go up to a hundred and twelve dollars and twenty cents for the average household. Again, every property is typically different based upon their impervious coverage or the amount of building material or concrete they have on their site.
So Dennis, given that the permit hasn't come out yet, how is this, how are we, how's that impacting our, our fee schedule projections and how we're moving forward?
So when we did the rate model, we actually did a projection of how much money we needed to save up to meet the requirements of the twenty percent. And again, just to kind of put this back in perspective, is the city has to treat, what we're anticipating under the permit is, for the Chesapeake Bay improvements, we're gonna have to treat twenty percent of the untreated impervious surface. So we roughly have about seventeen hundred square feet of impervious, acres, seventeen, sorry, not square. Seventeen hundred acres of impervious surface citywide. So twenty percent of that is roughly three hundred and fifty-four acres that we will have to treat within a five-year period, depending on when our permit is issued. So when we did the rate model, we actually calculated saving up for that because, as you all well know, we don't borrow funds. We actually have to save up for those funds. It's anticipated that that will range from twenty-five million to thirty-five million for those improvements. And as you can see, we only generate roughly, you know, three million, a little bit, almost four million dollars a year. So it takes us a long time to generate that type of cash to build those projects. So we are not recommending that you change the rate model at this particular point in time. To be honest, I'm gonna tell you that we're gonna recommend, once we get our permit and once we have a resolution on whether the state entities, whether that be the S H A, the county, or the school district pay. You know, we're having some discussions about whether they have agreed to pay or not pay their fee. We have currently assessed them. We may have to come back to you and readjust that remodel, but we don't wanna do it until that point in time.
So where are we keeping track of that assessment in this?
The fee?
Their, their, the state and county.
They actually are assessed to their property parcel.
Are we keeping track of it on our, on this program here?
We are not keeping, we are not showing it in the program because we have not written it off. It would just be uncollected fees at this point, so.
We're not gonna show it as a deficit in the fund?
We are not at this point, because we're under negotiations with several of them. The hope is they will ultimately pay. If they don't, we will actually have to write it off as bad, you know, a bad expense.
You don't wanna give us a range of how much money we're looking at potentially of?
In terms of the schools, of their properties?
Of the ones that, that we don't know if we're really gonna see.
Yes, I can give you a range. So for FY seventeen, you know, the county parcels are roughly seventy thousand, just under seventy thousand is what they would owe. M C P S is a hundred and twelve thousand. And then the state of Maryland, which we actually got one of them to pay, one of the agencies to pay and one not to pay, they're roughly thirty thousand. Again, those go up with each year, just as everybody else's. So for FY seventeen, the county bill is roughly eighty thousand. The M C P S bill is about one thirty-two, one hundred and thirty-two thousand. And Maryland is thirty-five.
So we're almost three hundred thousand, close to that.
Yes.
So it's a relatively small percentage on the whole. So if we need to make an adjustment, it won't be outrageously painful.
No, I think the bigger issue would be if, for some reason, we would anticipate that our permit is not what we thought it would be. That could make a major change.
We don't get any credit for work done prior to the permit being granted?
We get some credit.
We have some discussions with that. It's not clearly spelled out in the design manual. We have asked that question many a times to M D E and have not gotten a written response. We have some verbal response that we are getting credit. But how you read the manual is very important. And we wanted to clarify that and are continuing to try to clarify that with M D E.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Dennis.
So that's kind of where we're at on the rate model. Again, some of the other allocations we have related to the revenue are actually contributions from the city, partially our portion of our stormwater fee for all the city properties. We also have contributed from the General Fund. When we ran the rate model, you'll note that we reduced the fee and the city agreed to pay a portion from the General Fund as a transfer that's roughly just under a million dollars this year in FY, or in FY seventeen. And FY eighteen will actually ask you to increase that slightly to just over a million dollars. And that's to make up the difference between what the rate model showed, all the rate payers would have to pay and what the council was comfortable with. And then the other provisions are fairly small. One of them is interest, which is that. And then also the hardship provisions. We've agreed to cover those at, from the General Fund. So in terms of total revenue, that's just over five million dollars. In terms of expenditures, I'm not gonna go through each of the CIP expenditures for the stormwater. They are listed out in there and they can be lumped into kind of operational, which is a smaller portion of, of the fund. And then also the capital improvements that we need to make to the existing facilities that we have. So all the storm sewers and culverts and boxes that we have. And then also the TMDL improvements. The expenditures for FY seventeen are roughly two-point-five million dollars. Again, you can see there's a, roughly a two-point-five million dollar difference between what we're bringing in and what we're expending. That's partially due to the fact that we are not really building anything. We're actually mostly in the design phase for these projects. And so, once the permit is issued, we need to be prepared to actually expend some of those aspects. I will also tell you, we're trying a little bit different approach than we originally thought about. One is, we're trying to look at creating some larger regional facilities on parcels that would currently have facilities on them by expanding them. We're not really sure M D E is going to allow us to do those projects. We're currently in negotiation on some of those aspects because they tend to like smaller-scale projects, B M P projects, that have, in my mind, a higher maintenance cost than some of these more regional facilities. We have added approximately ten new projects to the Stormwater CIP. So we have a total of twenty-two projects related to the TMDLs and other aspects. And as we go forward, we would anticipate adding a few more as we get the permit. And I think I've already talked about the last two items I was gonna talk about, which was coming back to you with a rate model, once we have our permit. Do you have any other questions related to the stormwater?
We're actually, when we're, at what point are we actually gonna see? We were doing the rate by resolution, right? We do, we set the rate for each year?
You will actually set it based upon when you approve the fee schedule for the council. So it's, last year, we actually did a rate by resolution because we had to do it after the fee schedule. But this year, it's actually incorporated into the fee schedule.
Okay.
So if you want us to change that, I would need to know that fairly soon.
Really, I just wanna, I wanna make sure that the larger property owners, for example, the fairgrounds, is aware of, you know, what's going on. We don't, I don't wanna catch anybody by surprise with it.
And we would agree. We can, we will make sure that we send out before the bills go out, that they are aware of that issue.
Great.
So how was the decision made to, to use General Funds to subsidize the total fees rather than having each homeowner or business with a certain amount of impervious surface bear their own portion of cost?
We had a discussion with the council and the council felt that, that the fee that would have to be charged, which would be in the range of forty-five dollars per square foot, was not something they wanted to assess at this particular point in time.
Am I looking at it the wrong way? That General Fund is paid by everyone, including folks without impervious surfaces? And so therefore, they are subsidizing those folks who decide to have more impervious surfaces on their properties?
Because it's always a percentage of impervious surfaces, you are correct. Because there could be renters who would pay in terms of the income tax, who would pay the city, you know, we get seventeen percent of the state income tax, who may not own a property.
The property owner would own that property?
Yes. And they would still have to pay their portion of the fee. But it would not be the fee that we believed we needed to charge to meet the TMDL requirements.
To make a standalone fee? Yeah, it was, it really went through.
Probably too detailed for tonight, so.
We went through about a year and a half of, of meetings on this, you know, going through this exercise to get our arms around it and figure out the way that seemed best for the council at the time.
Right. And part of the issue also, and Dennis can correct us if we're wrong here, but the way that the, the permit works is really we have to kind of look holistically at the city as our, as the jurisdiction and the way that we are, you know, remediating for the whole city. So even though the individual fee structure looks at individual properties, really what we're, what we need to be, the ultimate goal we need to be accomplishing is generating the right amount of funds to mitigate for the whole city, right? I mean, I mean, that's what we talked about with respect to HOAs, for example, right, you know?
Individual property owners wouldn't be the person who's responsible for the mitigation unless they make improvements. And a residential property owner would never be required to do anything. It would just be larger commercial properties. So the city as a whole does have some bearing on making sure this occurs. And so I think it was a balance of what the council wanted to do. I will tell you, it does not look at the issue of us taking over HOA facilities. That's a completely separate issue that we will have to deal with sometime this summer. We have two HOAs who have requested that the city take over the maintenance of their stormwater facilities. And the rate model does not anticipate us taking over any additional facilities that we are not responsible for currently, or we would be.
We'll look forward to that.
And so are we.
All right, thank you. So where are we, Tony?
We are done. I believe in the budget public hearing, we, we showed where people could make comments, either to the city's website or by phone. We anticipate bringing the constant yield tax rate and the actual budget back for adoption, first meeting in June. And we'll provide a list of subsequent changes, a comprehensive list of subsequent changes, both to revenue and expenses, in the package with that. But otherwise, you know, we thank you for your, your questions. And we, we've gotten a lot of good information moving forward.
Great. So, and we, any questions, comments?
I had just three.
Go ahead, please.
That may relate to stuff that was covered before. On the green landscape, on the landscaping expenditures, I would ask that we look to adopting green practices. I know we talked about, we don't, we don't use it systematically, pesticides, herbicides systematically. I didn't get quite a.
I don't think we use them at all.
Well, we, we talked about.
We, we do use, we do use spot, round-up type. And some, we use bee removal pesticides.
As a component of fertilizer? I thought you had mentioned that.
We, we do use fertilizers in, in some areas, yes.
But do we use organic fertilizers or fertilizers that don't have a component of herbicide, fungicide?
I did a note, but I've already made a note to, that that was a concern.
Okay. So I would just ask to, I would like to move forward on that issue and to the extent that it needs to be incorporated to a budget.
Well, what we haven't really, we haven't adopted the pesticide, the county's pesticide ordinance law at this point. So we, we may be jumping ahead here.
I would like to jump ahead, but we'll.
And I think, well, you're talking about fertilizers and pesticides.
Not, not for, or the imposition of the county's ban on residences, commercial entities and whatnot.
Because my, my note was about fertilizers that we're using and whether we were gonna go organic, which would not be covered in the pesticide ban. So I think there's, there's actually two notes that we don't wanna talk about.
So what I'm talking about now, for budgetary purposes, is adopting more green practices. And so, I had mentioned at the strategic planning session, the possibility or consideration for a grants manager or some kind of centralized grants process so that we are capturing, my understanding is it's currently going department by department, ad hoc. To the extent we can chase down free money, I'd like to chase down free money. And then in the final budget process, I would like to just throw out there, and I don't even know if this is possible, is to adopt a budget utilizing the, the constant yield rate, meaning that we ultimately would have a reduction in the actual tax rate because of our expansion and our budget. And I don't know if that's even feasible, but I would like to look at that.
Tony, do you wanna answer that before we get the council's? What would the impact be on staff and what you've presented tonight?
You know, I don't, I don't recall what the constant yield rate was when we discussed it on Monday.
It's point two-six-two.
About four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which would be, which would be a big hit. I mean, we would have to make some reductions to, to this budget. Because as I said at the budget forum, current income is not covering current expenses right now. We're, we're using some reserves. And that coupled with the fact that, you know, we have the lowest tax rate in Maryland as it is, it, it's gonna be a challenge. It's obviously, it's your guys' call.
So.
I'd like, I'd like to make a comment on that. I mean, as you said, Tony, looking at the numbers in the budget, we're spending more money this year than we're taking in, even not counting the CIP stuff. It looks like we're, we're kind of below, below sea level. And we have, we still have to deal with whatever the impact of the wind case will be and whatever the impact of the state comptrollers issue and other uncertainty in the economy. This would not seem like the year to be messing around with that, in my opinion, at this point.
It's really a policy issue.
Well, I agree, you know, but I think one of the objectives was to develop a sustainable budget that, that, you know, where our revenues and our expenditures were, you know, balanced out pretty well over a long term. When we voted on the tax increase decision that we reached, I think, and it was a unanimous vote, it was that we wouldn't have to go back and do it again later. And I think the danger of going to the constant yield actually puts us in a position where, in a few years, we'll have to consider an increase again. So, you know, I, I thought that we were really looking forward in terms of, of developing that sustainable budget strategy. I still think that, that we lie in that, we're on that path. But I don't think this is the right time to be doing it, so.
I mean, from my perspective, I wasn't here in two thousand and eleven when we did increase taxes on our residents. My understanding is that the tax rates were increased because of budget shortfalls caused by the legacy of the Great Recession, to the extent that we're growing in our tax base from then. I would just ask that we not get comfortable, year-over-year increases as the tax base increases, just as a matter of form. And that's why I asked if it's possible, just to look at it so that we can consider it.
So just so I'm clear on what, what I think is being said here, so that we're not like ships passing in the night. Rob is talking about just seeing what an expenditure model would look like based on the constant yield. You're not saying that, you're not proposing like an actual tax rate cut at this point, right?
Well, it wouldn't be a tax rate cut. We're, we increase taxes.
It would be a tax rate cut. It would be. It would be a tax rate cut.
The rate is the rate.
Yes, so.
The constant yield is a, you know, theoretical rate that exists out there, but it is not the actual tax rate.
So, so our, yeah, correct. So our, our, the amount of revenue increased because our tax base increased with the improving economy. And that's why we had to put the notice out there that we are in fact proposing a tax increase.
Which we do every year.
We do that every year.
We're not really proposing a tax. We're not really proposing a tax increase, but.
Well, so that the 26 and odd cents doesn't increase. And so, yeah, so I'm not saying that.
It's a fixed rate.
I'm, I'm saying that I would like to see a model of what it would look like if we were to not increase taxes as opposed to the tax rate.
What you're saying is, you're suggesting that we don't allow revenue to increase even though the city's growing.
Right. And that's, that's where I was a little unclear, whether you were talking about saying, okay, keep the tax rate, the actual tax rate of 262 as it is, but show me a model of, of spending that is based on the theoretical constant yield rate. Or are you saying, show me a model that is based on a change in our revenue stream to the constant yield rate?
He wants, what you're saying is.
The latter of the two.
The latter, okay.
And then, to the extent that we have a, a certain budgetary surplus that, or a certain cash reserves, I think 60 million plus, that we could pay down over the years or use downward over the years to return that money to the taxpayer. That's what I'm trying to get at here.
So what do you not want to do over the next five years?
That's the question.
In order to provide that? No.
That is the question.
Well, so, you, you asked the question, so I'm asking you the question. What is it you don't think we need to do going forward that would allow us to, to do this, to do what you're proposing to do?
And that is exactly what I'm asking staff, is, is, we talked about.
No, that's, you know, staff does what we advise them to do, what we make, those judgments and those decisions. It's our decision, our discussion on that. So that's why I'm asking, what is it that you think we can stop doing so that we can address your, your constant yield issue?
Well, so I'm not going to go into the budget and say, in line item 1123, I think we should be spending 10,000 less.
But that's, that's what it's going to come down to.
What I'm, what I'm asking is for the staff that knows the expenditures, that knows the amounts that they need in order to proceed with the activities that the city requires, if there is wiggle room to decrease expenditure so that we can come to a place where we can then lower the actual rate, I would be interested in that. Because again, we did raise the rate in 2011 on our residents.
Okay. Well, I'm not seeing that you have support on this one, so let's just move forward, I suppose.
Yeah, I don't see any.
Yeah, I mean, you know, my, my feeling is, you know, I, I think it's a, it's a valiant thing to want to be interested in trying to do, but I think in context of, the broader context of, you know, why the rate was increased in 2011, what the public input or lack of input was in 2011, the much broader context of a 50- or 60-year history of the arc of the rate, the relation of the rate to every other rate that's out there from every other jurisdiction in Maryland, basically, all those things sort of also need to be taken into consideration. And I also think, you know, what, what Tony said earlier, there's a flip side to it. On the one hand, we express a little concern that in this particular year, this snapshot of the arc of our long-term plan of spending versus revenue, yes, in this particular year, this particular proposal, spending does exceed revenue, but it's part of a longer-term plan to get, keep us on track. And to me, it would seem like in a year where, although those concerns are legitimate, in a year where we're looking at spending slightly exceeding revenue, that would not be the year for us to reduce our revenue stream. Although I understand what you're saying is that we should also be reducing spending. But to me, it seems like that would not be the year to be trying to reduce our revenue stream, particularly when, you know, I frankly don't think it's an issue with the public. I, I don't think we should be collecting taxes just for the hell of it and not doing anything with it. I don't think that's responsible either, but I think where we are right now, people are comfortable with, there isn't, you know, a hue and cry for folks to, you know, cut the bud, slash the budget left and right and then return money to the taxpayer. I think my sense from the public is that we're in generally the right spot. So I don't know that this exercise, that it's the right time to be doing this exercise. I think maybe, you know, to plan ahead for the next, next year's strategic planning session and next year's budget after this, if we want to start looking at that, maybe that's worth a look, but to me, I don't think that this is, that there's enough need at this point for us to be looking into something like that.
Just thought I'd raise the issue.
No, that's fair. You have the right to do so.
Let me make one last point on it because I've looked at these numbers really hard because I was hoping that we could, you know, I don't like paying taxes any more than anybody does personally. The stormwater one was, is another really big hit, and I think, as you noticed, there's a million dollars a year plus coming out of the general fund to cover the stormwater because we didn't want to hit the residents and the businesses with a very large suddenly, sudden new bill.
Right.
To cover a $30 million expenditure that we have to make by federal mandate. So, I mean, I, I mean, I think we're.
That we think, we think we have to make because we don't really know what our federal mandate is yet.
Well, it might be worse than $30 million.
Could be worse.
It's probably not going to be better.
At the low end, it's probably going to be about 25, so.
So anyway, until we, until the unknowns become more known, I, I really think that this is not the time to have that discussion, but I'm happy to have that discussion and, you know, as things become clearer in future budget cycles.
That's fair.
Yeah, I agree.
And just to be fair, this is the first conversation I've had with staff about this issue.
That's fine. Staff doesn't make that decision, we do. And I know that Henry, we spoke to Henry about this as well, and he's, he's not, he's inclined with the majority here, so.
All right. So, no further business. I will just note that the next regular meeting in the mayor and city council is a week from today, May 2nd, here at City Hall, 7:30. And until then, let's do great things, Gatorsburg. We are adjourned.